Good morning. Welcome to the January 23rd, 2020, Halle Fairing, New York City Landmark. I will call it go. Check out here. Commissioner Blaine.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Yes.
Commissioner Tatum.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Commissioner Draperson.
Here.
Commissioner Volbretson.
Here. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item this morning for calendar input. Item number one is LP 2644, a proposed Menida Street historic district in the Bronx with boundaries as described in the following presentation by Baron Nellin. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mary Donnelly. I'm from the Research Department presenting our proposal for the Menida Street historic district in the Hunts Point neighborhood of the Bronx. The proposed district consists of forty-two semi-detached brick houses executed in a modest Renaissance revival style with rounded projecting bays and classically inspired facade trim. Designed by architects Dob and Crimborde and James F. Meehan and built in 1908-1909, the block is an intact example of the early 20th century development that occurred in the neighborhood in response to transportation improvements and rapid industrialization. Located between Lafayette and Harrison Avenues, the proposed Menida Street historic district boundary is shown here in red and incorporates houses on both sides of the street. The proposed district is located in the Hunts Point section of the Bronx, shown here, which contains a mix of industrial, commercial, institutional, and residential uses. Other designated New York City landmarks located in the vicinity of the proposed Menida Street historic district include the American Banknote Company Printing Plant directly west and the Peter S. Co. House, known as Sunny Slope, two blocks east. The Longwood Historic District and Extension are located southwest of Menida Street on the other side of the Ruckner Expressway and were developed just a few years prior to the proposed district. For much of its history, Hunts Point was a rural area known as West Farms. Grand estates dotted the landscape like the LPC designated Sunny Slope shown on the bottom left and the no longer extended Hunts Point Avenue home shown on the top left. Originally part of Westchester County, West Farms was annexed to New York City in 1874. This annexation, along with the annexation of neighboring communities like Morrisania and Kingsbridge, brought a number of infrastructure improvements to the area, including transportation. The future location of Menida Street is outlined in red on this 1887 Robinson map, which depicts the area's rural character before today's current street grid was completed. Hunts Point remained undeveloped into the early 20th century as illustrated by this 1904 map on the right, where the proposed district is again shown in red. The expansion of the subway into the Bronx from Manhattan initiated the area's shift from a rural community to an industrial hub over the next several decades. The West Side IRT subway line, indicated by the blue dotted line, reached the Bronx in 1904. The blue dot marks the location of the Intervale Avenue subway station, which was completed in 1910 and is acknowledged as a major impetus for development in Hunts Point. In addition to these transportation improvements, easy access to the waterfront, railroad, and the Oak Point rail yard on the lower-left corner of the map made Hunts Point an ideal location for industrial growth. Large manufacturing buildings, such as the ones shown in the photograph on the left, began to replace many of the old country estates. Menida Street was cut through the Fox and Fayle family estates in 1897 and was undeveloped like most of Hunts Point when the map on the left was published in 1904. In the fall of 1908, newspapers began referencing the start of construction on Menida Street. Two developers and two architects completed the forty-two houses by the spring of 1909. The Menida Company developed the east side with the architectural firm of Dob and Crimborde, while James F. Meehan, who also served as architect, developed the west side. These residential buildings appear on the 1911 map on the right as one of the earliest developments in the area. A road tenement was also constructed directly east of Menida Street along Hunts Point Avenue. They remain extended, though heavily altered. The development of this block of Menida Street occurred in anticipation of the area's industrial development, which was expected to attract a large number of skilled and well-paid employees. Developers envisioned Hunts Point as a mixed-use neighborhood, and construction of both residential and industrial buildings continued steadily during the first few decades of the 20th century. The 1912 newspaper clipping shown here included a photograph of Menida Street as evidence of the rapid development of the Hunts Point section of the Bronx. The same newspaper clipping also included an image of the American Banknote Company Printing Plant, a New York City landmark constructed in 1911 and located directly west of the proposed historic district. This building type is illustrative of the area's surrounding Menida Street, which consists of mostly industrial buildings and larger-scale apartment houses, as you can see in this aerial image with the proposed district outlined in red. Menida Street stands out from its industrial and commercial surroundings due to its residential character in combination with its historical and aesthetic consistency, all of which gives it a strong sense of place. Two developers and two architects were responsible for the construction of the buildings between 1908 and 1909. In addition, Menida Street's strong stylistic consistency distinguishes the proposed district as a discreet enclave within Hunts Point. Executed in modest Renaissance revival style, the two-story and basement semi-detached buildings feature mirror image façades with rounded projecting bays, low stone stoops, simple cornices with steeply pitched roofs above, and ornamentation concentrated around the doors and windows. Ornamental variation differentiates the east and west sides of the street, as depicted in the photos here. The east side of Menida Street contains a consistent row of semi-detached houses with restrained brick façades, bowed window bays, belt courses ornamenting the fenestration, and projecting doorhoods supported by scrolled brackets atop the entrances. The buildings on the west side of the street are more embellished and show greater variety. Flemish revival-style parapets project above the bays of several buildings. Lintoles and door surrounds feature varied classical motifs, and original stained-glass transoms are obtained in some of the windows. Since both sides of the block feature buildings with the same height, form, and style, Menida Street is visually cohesive and establishes a strong sense of place within Hunts Point. Research staff noted three general types of alterations: facade material replacements, roofline simplifications, and the addition of areaway fences. While these alterations are present on the block, in most cases historic decorative detail and the original form and materials of the building have been retained, and overall the block has good integrity. As shown on this map, the majority of the houses are intact or have minor alterations. There are thirteen houses that are moderately altered, and three buildings have experienced heavy alterations. Intact buildings or those with minor alterations retain their historic form and decorative details, with alterations primarily limited to window and door replacements or modifications to the stoop or areaways. Moderately altered buildings have experienced changes to the roofline or facade material, and buildings that have been resurfaced in nonhistoric materials and have also lost trim details or major roofline features are identified as heavily altered. As shown in these comparisons to circa 1940 tax photos, this block of Menida Street remains intact overall and is a strong reminder of the area's early 20th century residential architecture. Most of the properties along the west side of Menida Street include rear garages and outbuildings that are accessible through Moretto Street. These buildings were later additions and are not visible from within the proposed historic Mid-20th century brought drastic economic and infrastructure changes that had devastating impacts on the South Bronx. Today, however, Menida Street appears as much as it did more than a century ago and has a strong sense of place and historic character, distinct from its more industrial and commercial surroundings. It remains a remarkable example of the early 20th century construction boom that occurred in the South Bronx as a result of expanded transportation routes and industry in the area. The research staff recommends that the commission calendar the proposed Menida Street historic district for consideration as a New York City landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Baron Nellin. Are there any questions on this?
Probably one for you then for this district. Sorry. I think the striking thing seems to be that these buildings are actually largely intact. How much development from the 19th century remains outside of this district? We obviously had to sort of leave you right on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of the surrounding area is 20th century industrial with some 20th century commercial. And Baron Nellin, can you answer the question about whether or not there's any 19th century development around here? The Sunny Slope House, which is an individual landmark.
Most of the 19th century, yeah, most of it remains on the other side of the Ruckner Expressway, I think closer to the Longwood Historic District. So really, on this side of Hunts Point, this appears to be some of the earliest development.
And the two structures that we did not include that are on either side of, one side of the block there, they seem to be, I don't think we have a picture of them. What are those? Because they look like sandwiches on either side. They look like they might be.
There's a post office on one end, a sort of community center on the other end, and then that other one is also a community, like also a community, yes, sort of converted industrial building that is now looking at the community center.
So what we're getting at was there's no chance of expanding this sometime in the future. It is what it is. If we don't like the road right behind it that's on Hunts Point Avenue, that's not the best we could get, right?
Right, so the, right there, you know, I mean, some historic districts have a lot of variety in typology, and you can find that there's a sense of place, and maybe that sense of place actually tells you the story of periods of development, 20th century houses, 20th century apartment buildings, and there's a story that can be read through the buildings here. The surrounding properties are not only very different in typology, and again, mostly industrial there, they have more integrity issues. As we know, in this section of the block, there's some, a lot of disinvestment for long periods, so we are surveying and looking for opportunities. I think we are trying to be as flexible as possible with respect to alterations, but the tenements behind it are very heavily altered and everything around it is much more utilitarian, let's say.
Yeah, that flexibility was why I was thinking that maybe there was potential for that road behind it, but I guess not.
The current zoning, does it support something much different than what we see here? In other words, is there going to be a tug-of-war between zoning and preservation?
Yeah, I can speak to that. The zoning is relatively low. It would allow me the modest one or two-story addition to these buildings.
Any other questions? Well, I mean, it's, you know, very exciting to be calendaring a historic district in the Bronx, and as I said, we're always looking for opportunities throughout all five boroughs, and the Bronx is an area where there are fewer landmarks, and so this is an exciting step for us. So I would like to make a motion that we calendar it for future public hearing. All right, on favor?
On.
So that's calendaring, and we'll stay at a local meeting in the next.
We're going to start off Preservation Department's agenda with a couple of public meeting items. The first one today is item number one, LPC 19-40369, application for amendment. This is the borough of Manhattan, block 1496, Lot B, 7 East 84th Street, the Metropolitan Museum of Historic District. The row house built in 1884-85 and redesigned as a Neo-Regency-style residence by Justice and Allen in 1906. The application is to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 19-3209 to modify the time of entrance. It was last presented at the public hearing of July 16th, 2019. No action was taken at that time.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Pashaw, Preservation Staff. 7 East 84th Street is located on the north side of East 84th, between Fifth and Madison Avenue, is within the Metropolitan Museum of Historic District. In 2016, the commission issued a certificate of appropriateness to remove out of the facade rooftop and relocate the central entrance, which was seen here, to the east side of the building. This was the approved proposal, removing and reinstalling the historic door surrounding corners and to modify the existing garage door opening to this, which was present at the time of designation. A modification to this proposal was presented at the public meeting of July 16th, 2019. The proposal at that time was to remove the cornice above the relocated door entrance and the remainder of the previous approval to be unchanged. At this meeting, Commissioners were concerned with the prominence of the blusoir stone design above the garage door and the resulting relationship between the two entrances. In response to those concerns, the proposal has been revised. The blusoir stone design above the garage has been replaced with a straight scienlito at a slightly higher height, and it to a closer elevations here. This was the previous proposal in July, and this is the current proposal. In addition, it's a bit easier to see here, the existing joint blusoir at the historic door surrounds being relocated will now be extended into the stone above, lending a bit more prominence, subtle prominence to the relocated entrance. Authorcy of the architect is on hand if you have any questions about the proposal.
Thank you, Tim. So maybe put the three side by side.
This is without the fence, which is already.
Very. So the original approval approved relocating the entrance and providing this entryway in the garage. The last part, the applicant, as you recall, presented the approval of that conference and talked about how very proud it was to practice. I think everybody was at the table that day was comfortable with the idea of that, but was concerned that the garage and the promise was simply approved as far as that. And so, in response to those comments, they simplified it and then added some light blusoir joint lines above the door as well. You know, this has seemed responsive?
I think they did a good job of it. I think the picture that we just had up there shows you it's actually better than comparison, or you see that. I think as you, the foot traffic is going to recognize the prominence again of the entrance.
I think it's also an example of tiny, really pretty small detail, and when we did change slightly, it really did make a big difference. So I think that's what's happened here, is a much better scheme than it was in the approval.
Right. So, very. What do you think?
A matter of, 84th Street, Metropolitan Museum of Historic District. This is an application to amend Certificate of Appropriateness 19-3209 to modify the design of the entrance. I note that the building's style, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the New York City district. We recommend approval, noting that the work will be in keeping with the previously agreed concept of rationality as a base of the building, which contains a nonhistoric garage opening, that the elimination of the cornice above the relocated entrance will simplify the ground of the surround and give space between it and the projecting bay below, that the new simplified stone coursing of the expanded garage opening will match the existing stone coursing at the base of the building, that the simplification of the garage opening and installation of thin joint blusoir stones above the relocated entrance will help emphasize the prominence of the entrance in relation to the garage, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building and its future within the historic district.
Second. Pause there. May I oppose? That's approved. Thank you.
Moving to the second public meeting item, number two, this is LPC 20-02527, application for certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan, block 673, Lot 1, 261 11th Avenue, AKA 261 to 279 11th Avenue, 240 to 238 12th Avenue, 601 to 651 West 27th Street, 650 to 654 West 28th Street, and the West Chelsea Historic District. The complex of American Roundup Shop, Roundup Shop warehouse buildings designed by George V. Lawley, Otto and Dec, building in 1890, under water. Application is to reconstruct through competition, replace windows, create multi-dimensional pillars, install support, and provide access for the support of the street tree pits, and establish an electric power in the future installation of signage. This was last presented at the public meeting December 10th. No activity or action was taken at that time.
Leanne Collins, Preservation Staff. This item is 260 11th Avenue, also known as Turbo Warehouse. At the December 10th, 2019 public meeting, the review was focused on three areas of the project. At that time, Commissioners were supportive of the presented changes for signage and for the lighting plans. With regard to the windows, Commissioner Hallig was mixed with some support for the presented multilight windows at the 11th Avenue facade and of the nine-story building on the street beside that were mixed with some single-light windows at the remainder of the street and avenue facade. Other Commissioners wanted to see a return of the multilight windows across the building or to see windows that were more evocative of the historic Delaunay operation. With regard to the addition, Commissioners were generally supportive of the concept of the large addition with amassing as proposed, but asked that the architects re-study the top two floors of the addition and redesign the elevator and stair bulkheads at the eastern end of the addition. Cass Tacklebird and Rick Cook are here presenting the proposed changes. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to get a look at the proceedings. On favor?
Thank you, Leanne. Good morning, Commissioners. Cass Tacklebird, Stevens Place Partners. Leanne said there are two components that we want to bring back to you today addressing the comments on the windows, which I will speak to, and Rick will speak to the architectural changes. 11th Avenue, decided to build a building from a warehouse. Jumping right in, what you saw last month, this was a previous proposal, which included the historic 10 over 10 over 10 multilight windows on 11th Avenue and then maintaining the single-light treatment, shown in yellow, across the long elevations, with the nine-light windows on Block B that changed over to the three different typhonies. One of the Commissioners last month noted that there's sort of a monolite quality to the way that the facade ran, this sort of multilight mixed in with the monolites. Our proposal is to bring back texture and variety to these elevations. So this is the 20 East Street elevation. 27th Street is similar. We maintain the multilight configuration on 11th Avenue. These now are operable six-over-six windows, which is an historic window type on the building, maintaining the nine-over, the nine-light windows here at Lot B, and then going to the six-over-six. And we'd like to propose, and we'll speak to this in just a moment, maintain that proposal for the single-light windows on the 12th Avenue side. The west side is a building that looks out over the West Side Highway. The 28th Street side of the building, again, this is the previous proposal with majority of windows proposed previously as the single-light windows, and then the proposal to integrate the six-over-six windows. These windows shown in green, these are openings that have been modified over time and we're proposing a paired nine-light window, so they're green, similar to that. So with this proposal, we have a lot more texture. There was a desire to sort of relate these elevations back to the historic reading of the building, which we've done. We also, as compared with the existing master plans of the building, which in almost all of these locations shown in blue, the master plan calls for or allows for a one-over-one window. We've eliminated one-over-one windows from this proposal, which is not a historic typhon of the building, so we think this represents an improvement. I want to just touch on the ends of the building, the 11th Avenue side and the 12th Avenue side. As I noted, we are maintaining the proposal. I would ask you to consider the appropriateness of the multilight windows fronting into the West Chelsea Historic District on 11th Avenue and the proposal to maintain the single-light windows on the 12th Avenue side. A few reasons that we think this is appropriate. One is just about the architectural integrity of these two sides of the building. The 11th Avenue side maintains its original fenestration and its openings, and as I said, faces into the West Chelsea District. It's seen in conjunction with these three, two other massive warehouse buildings, Carabina and Balla, Ohio Building, is an interesting ensemble of warehouse buildings in the district. The west elevation on 12th Avenue has been altered over time. There are significant new openings that have been created across the lower half of the elevation, so the architectural integrity on 12th Avenue is not the same as it is on 11th Avenue. And in addition, Store 26, as we've discussed about the strip of the building, Store 26 itself was completely reconstructed, so that there are integral architectural changes that have happened that might allow for more change on the west side of the building. And then the other piece, sort of looking forward to the design proposal, the single-light windows are in an interesting dialogue of those addition of the roof. We speak, we think it speaks to the sort of new uses of the building, the changes and adaptability use of this important landmark. So we think for both the reasons of integrity and also looking forward in whether the addition appeals itself, that a single-light window on these limited openings on the west side of the building could be appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Richard Buck from the Fox Architects. We heard this was a Dan, there's an issue of refinements and modification, unification of the architectural expression on the one hand. The others, to go back and think about bulkhead expressions that show on Block B and see, we could think about the integrity of our design relative to those a little more carefully. So we've done that. What I'll present is that long view that we have all the way from the High Line, which is three and a half blocks out of the historic district, is a very elevational view. We'll zoom in on that, I'll talk about it, and then we'll switch around to some other views, walk around the building, and then at the end, we have a few quick animations to look at the context of how the expression reads on the streets here. So this is the long view. It's three and a half blocks north from the elevated position, and what you can see is we eliminated the bulkheads that were right here and simplified the elements. What I'll do next is click to what we saw the last two times, and we'll zoom in on this location. So this is what we had previous. So this is what we had, uh, previously, you can see the bulkheads that were here, that's the stair, uh, elevator bulkhead, that's the stair bulkhead, that's the very first time we came again with a different expression, and then where we are now. If I zoom in on that, you can see that, uh, one of the things that's happened is we went back and looked at the configuration of the stair bulkheads, it's kind of a three-part step, and the way that they read, we, uh, reduced the stair bulkheads on the other side to the same exact height, eliminated the elevator bulkhead altogether, so get these bulkheads to read together. And it did two things, one, it gives us this kind of interesting step reading and step reading here, and also, uh, is this kind of fun thing, this is what I call where we camouflage, one building is seen flaged against another building, the way these two buildings sit together, it's really important to us to think about how our building, our proposal read relative to the stair behind it. And then you can see that the reading of the primary two-story grid and the other two floors have really got simplified and unified, it kind of drops detail in layers like you might see in landscape, so as you, as layers back, it drops a little bit of detail, it's really designed as a unified expression. Again, the, the key thing about this is that the building itself was built around the rail cars and rail car proportions, if you look at the building, it's coded to tell you it's based on the rail, your rail car proportions, you can even see where the loading was. Uh, initially, we came back, we're a little literal about the rail cars, so I think the way we talk about it now is the building was designed around the rail car, that reads, and our architectural expression is designed around the building, therefore its DNA goes back to the rail cars, but there's nothing literal there, other than a very direct proportional relationship. So here you can see, um, well, it might seem like a little thing, I think it was a fairly significant change to take these away from the composition, have that step read as the stair behind, and this is what we had previously, and where we are now. Uh, so we're pretty happy about the way the bulkheads worked to reinforce the expression of the building, and kind of simplify and unify, and have the building read as a whole. Uh, this is the kind of unfair drone view up close, which is to see the architectural expression about how this reads, this module is related to the module below, so there's a kind of vertical reading that reads through the horizontal expression of the building, that's directly tied in proportions of the buildings below, there's even these, uh, little markers about store twenty-four and store twenty-two, that this is a, a vertical expression of a building that had adapted and changed and, and grown on Lot B and, and planned to grow even more to the west side, we really view this project as an evolution of a building rooted in its sister. Um, this is a, is a kind of outline of all the changes that have been made, the stair bulkhead is lowered, the floor plate simplified, the exterior elevator tower moved entirely here, potential, our, uh, our stipulation to match ten and eleven, the water tanks lowered, and damage that, uh, recently removed, um, so that's where we were, that's where we were, and back to where we are. So this is the one that was, that was kind of most interesting, even though we're going to lose this view very quickly, um, this is the one where you see the bulkheads reading it around, where we changed the height, we changed the architectural expression, it kind of set up this next evolution of the building, so rather than have the tall towers kind of dominate from the east, the elevator bulkhead's been eliminated, the stair towers have been reused, and we're back to kind of a stead for this light addition onto the building, and I think that reads better, uh, next to the stair behind this view also. We're going to lose this view, uh, so the other long view, we slide down, uh, the side street to the west side highway, it's a kind of jumbled mess over there, there's a lot of trees, we don't get a good view from here, but that's where we were, that's kind of what I ought to do, we showed originally, and back to where we are right now. Um, when we step all the way out to the pier, you can actually get all the way out on Pier fifty-four and look back, it really sets the context at the foothills of these very large buildings and lots of yards that are coming along, and tucking in next to its, uh, neighbor, stair behind, that's where we were, where we were, and where we are again. And then this one, I think, sets up the argument about the dialogue, about why, if we're dealing in the ten over ten over ten, and the six over six, and the nice texture that creates, why on twenty-three and twenty-six, the twelfth avenue, do we think that the monolithic lights still work? And part of that is, these modifications that already happened here, uh, the fact that store twenty-six was actually collapsed and was rebuilt, and also a dialogue about the reading of the rooftop addition relative to the building, I think there's an interesting dialogue that works there. And then, I would say, even conceptually, there's this history of growing and more elbow room creativity as we move further to the west. Where we were, um, we eliminated, uh, some of the volume, it's interesting context of how that has evolved and simplified to where we are right now, and the way that this, uh, slips in right behind the bulkhead, tucks in right behind the bulkheads. Uh, this is the view just north at twenty-eighth street, showing the same thing, and where we were, where we were, and then if I click on this, and hopefully the animations will run. I showed the animations to, uh, to talk about how we imagined the building, would we be perceived, we talked a lot about from within historic district, how the building would read, and animations give you that kind of time, distance, and scale, it's a little So this is coming down now, eleven, the new building under construction, uh, we're entering historic district now, you just start to see the addition over, over the back, and then we get, the texture of the ten over ten seems to, uh, be helping on the left street, no question, historic read that was, uh, increasing in height and change and, uh, structure. So that's within historic district, the reading of the building, and that's will be twenty-eighth street. Coming down twenty-eighth street, here you really get the context of this massive ground scraper, and the texture of the six over six, looking up and seeing how the addition tucks in behind the bulkheads, the void how it relates to store twenty-two, and how it come all the way out on the west side highway, and there's this, uh, amassing and compositional quality where the building reads as a two-story addition, kind of flowing over here, more original, uh, architectural, uh, masonry design, and then in context with what's happening in lots of yards, and tucked in and out of stair behind. And then this one, uh, is coming down twenty-seven, where you feel stair behind, now we're inside of historic district in this view, and you can see the sheer context, about two-thirds of the building, uh, is just a restor, or restoration, rehabilitation, and then we just get that tucking in behind the bulkheads, and then that little bit of, of visual trick of this thing hovers, and there's a kind of void between the masonry fabric and the building above, and the dialogue between the monolithic lights and the large lights of, uh, facade Which brings us back to the context again, that there's at least three great warehouses, there's a, I won't repeat our whole presentation the last few times, but the district, um, the district is really broken between, um, east and west of eleventh avenue, there are three heroic warehouses that speak in dialogue with each other's history of technology and warehousing, um, I believe that, that getting to do this project was a real blessing, because this current ownership is for the first time able to finance a comprehensive rehabilitation, adaptive reuse, and restoration of the building, that the building, everything we've done is based on the DNA of the building, being rooted in this fascinating history of rail cars, uh, the last few times we've been there, we've always gone back to sixteen oh nine, going to first year of contact, if we're able to go back to fifteen twelve, with Dr. Cook on, uh, on the timbers of the building. So it's just a fascinating building, and I believe that the history of the building is one of adaptation and change and growth and use and growth to the, to the west side, and, uh, I would like to make the argument that this is an appropriate commission for Turbo Warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So, let's move into our standard. So, you know, this, uh, as Rick said, this is, and I think the Commissioners, through all of our seniors, found this to be a really exciting opportunity to comprehensively address this building and, and, um, provide a new use, um, of uses that would happen all at one time and address, um, a lot of restorative, uh, needs, and, and so there are many restorative aspects to this project, as you can call, interior and exterior, and the proposed addition has been pushed to the west, which is where the building historically grew and had other plans to grow further there. And I think that, as Lian said, in the first, um, in the earlier discussions and last time when we all met, I think that, um, the majority of people were comfortable with that approach to the, to a much more restoration approach on, within the district, and the addition, um, pushed to the twelfth avenue side, and I think that last time, there were just some comments about the expression at the rear, um, addition, and we have been studying it in elevation, really, those elevational views, which was the right thing to do, to get the right design, but I think that the animation today really helped to show you how you really experience, um, the expression in relation to the building. Um, so there were comments about the architectural expression of the bulkheads and the windows, and so, um, the proposal today reintroduces multi-light windows at all of the facades, except for the twelfth avenue, and where the building is more heavily affected, see connection with the addition. And so, um, you know, let's go around and see, like, we'll just go around and pick everybody, um, and in order, so Michael, would you, like, you actually make a comment about those bulkheads, if you think are a great change.
And the windows were a change for me, and I'm absolutely delighted at the genius changes you've made to this building, thank you, thank you for dealing with the windows, I, I think the, the, having the, the single-light windows on the twelfth avenue side is a, a perfect solution for this, um, I, I didn't have so many problems with the addition itself, it was the, the bulkheads that were bothering me, and you've, you've done it, sir, it's a bold thought. If, if I could pick one knit, it is that the eleventh avenue facade topped with little frilly trees, I know people are going to hate me for this, it really bugs me, it sounded like having little doilies on top of the thing, could we off the trees on the eleventh avenue side? Just, this, whatever, anyway, thank you.
Sure, I think so.
Little cookie things on top of a husky building like this, I'm sorry.
You live near the Brooklyn Botanic Garden.
Yeah, well, and there you go, this is not a Botanic Garden nor a planter, it's a, it's a brusque, husky warehouse. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I'm done.
I think this is much improved, and, um, you know, in a hands-free architectural team, this is a prospect, and I can't wait to see it open.
I just want to reiterate what I think I've said many times, there are many different kinds of proposals like this, but for me, um, this is the most exciting and difficult kind of architecture that has been practiced globally in the world today, and not just here in New York, um, you know, from many other places as well, it requires a, such a thoughtful, um, deep-seated, interning to your own thoughts and artistic ideas about how, what's appropriate, you know, element by element, very difficult, um, and ultimately very gratifying and exciting, uh, new and old architecture, and I think this is, um, this is one of the greatest examples I've been to see around this table. Um, I think, uh, Rick's, um, evolution, uh, in many respects is interesting, I was, I think I was willing, really to approve this on first hearing, it's, it's, it's gotten better, and it's gotten better, obviously because of the architectural response, the architect's response, but it's also gotten better because of my colleagues pointing out things that maybe I was overlooking, so I think will benefit evolution need too. Um, I think, uh, the proportional issues, uh, that Rick just talked about, starting with, um, rail cars, et cetera, et cetera, ultimately will be understood by almost no one, but that doesn't matter, it's great architecture, it's all, I, I obviously always study at this level, and is seldom understood, but there's an overall satisfaction with the proportional system that results, and I think that's what we're seeing here now, it just seems right, we don't really need to know exactly all the details, all of some architecture, we'd want to always know how to get there, I think it just seems right. The coloration, uh, which is new on this scheme, uh, and the lack of the bulkhead is a hu, is a huge step, step forward. Um, and I think the model and the animation shows that this, uh, ground scraper, this huge building, only in New York does it seem like a, a little jewel, uh, here in the world. But it does, and I think it will read as a jewel, uh, I think it, it is a jewel, I'm really excited to be, um, sitting here today, I hope, I think, among our first two of the projects.
I've been supportive of this project from the beginning, as have all of my colleagues. Uh, I also want to commend the architect for listening to the, um, you know, the, the desire for more refinements from, um, from the Commission, and I want to also commend what I've said to my colleagues, because I think the project is better and tighter than it was at the last proposed stage, and I would prefer to say at the last proposal. The windows are very, the lowering of the bulkheads work, um, I, I think this, I've always seen this overlay between the two buildings, but it's even tighter now, and as a unit, it on top, as a unit, meaning the new addition on top of the old addition, I feel like they fit together really nicely, almost like a level piece. Um, I think my only regret is that, um, in, in admiring this building from this perspective, it is true, once the, the building to the north goes up, we won't be able to see it. So, thank you, and I look forward to admiring it from whatever perspective I'm concerned.
I think you resolved all the issues beautifully, I think it's out, I had a list of traits that I did not really work out, at the urban level, uh, the composition, the distorted fabric of eleventh avenue, is really beautiful, it worked out, and had a certain kind of character to this, very powerful. I particularly like this view, in that the purest composition, the discarded, what is it, three, discarded lehigh building, what we do is a beautiful composition of all these buildings together, with a view, the relationship to, to the Hudson Yards, you see, uh, architectural style, the composition, with a view of, of certain types of compositions. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Uh, first just to follow up on Michael Rutter's comment, um, we often hear applicants discounting views that are not street level, um, and also those that are from a distance and those that are from outside of the district, uh, those distinctions actually are not recognized, uh, by us, and so this is actually one of the most, um, important, um, views, um, it's a view, um, that more people, from the public, are going to see than virtually any other, um, except for we see by, uh, twelfth avenue. Um, the, the, what they've done with the windows, getting to the point of eighty-five to ninety percent of windows be multi-light, um, and, uh, great, um, achieving that, that quantity and consistency, uh, of the windows on each side of the building, I think, was a good result, uh, and completely appropriate. Um, my concern, I know we, uh, we often talk about distinguishing, uh, the, uh, the addition at the top of the building from the building itself, I think that, that had been achieved from the beginning, but I think, uh, what I was concerned about was that it had blended, um, too much into the horizontality of the discarded lehigh, and I think that, um, some of the small vertical detail they added, I think in, uh, one of the low, low, one of the levels of windows there, where they actually, uh, uh, increased the, um, the decrease of the work value, so I think that actually helped to distinguish it. Um, on the, um, animation, I would comment that I think that not enough applicants use, um, animation to help us to understand the, the view of the building. Um, here, uh, I guess I'm not concerned though, because here, at least we got animation without fraud, um, and I think it's got the, at times, we'll get animation that it's, um, maybe I'll give a little watch out for that, but this was done very nicely. Uh, and, and finally, on, uh, on Michael's problem, maybe we can come up with some, And finally, on, on Michael's problem, maybe we can come up with some, with brusque and husky trees.
The modifications were positive and started to evolve appropriately.
I'm also a big fan of animation and creating whatever we can in the architecture project in particular. I, I mean, just echo the sentiments of my colleagues and the builder translation, which I think works very well, which seems to be bulkheads, which is dramatic and will not always be perceived in a professional, because as we've commented, some of the views of what's going to be, as you said, a jewel of the building in our belongs to. I don't think we can do anything about. And the modification, of course, of the addition and this improved its relationship to the system, to the building itself and also the overall relationship is there, which is, is very what is accomplished in a terrific way. So it's a great project.
I also want to thank the applicants for this meeting, being sort of positive. Thank my colleagues for your comments. And I think, you know, Fred, last time you warned about the danger of redesigning an architect's design. And I think that the changes here have made this project even better and very appropriate without losing the design goals that the architect had and his own inspirations and his own sort of philosophical approach. So I think it was really a great process with a great result and thank you all. And Jeannie, I'm afraid it's your turn to shake the motion. In a matter of docket, nineteen dash forty-three sixty-nine seven. Oops, that's not it. I didn't turn the page. Docket twenty dash zero two five two seven. Two sixty-one on the avenue, AKA two sixty-one dash two seventy-nine on the avenue. Two twenty dash two thirty-eight, twelfth avenue, six zero one dash six five one, West Twenty-seventh Street and six hundred, dash six fifty-four, West Twenty-eighth Street, West Chelsea Historic District. Complex of American round arch style warehouse buildings designed by George P. Mallory and Otto M. Beck and built in eighteen ninety, ninety-one. Application is to construct rooftop additions, replace windows, create and modify window openings and store, install storefront infill, canopies, lighting, barrier-free access ramps, flood vents, tree pits, and establish a master plan governing the future installation of signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the West Chelsea Historic District. I also note that the buildings within the West Chelsea Historic District reflect important trends in the development of industrial architecture in the United States and in New York City. And the district experienced different waves of development throughout the nineteenth and twentieth century, bringing in innovative types of building construction. A further note, that the building is separated into twenty-five semi-independent stores linked via a central train tunnel and was intended to serve warehouse purposes that certain stores within the building complex were rebuilt using steel and concrete construction with added stories while others retained a store fire-rated timber construction. And that there was a planned two-story rooftop addition at the western twelfth avenue that entered the building from the early nineteen hundreds, beaching taller corner towers that was never constructed. Furthermore, I note that there is ongoing construction of new high-rise buildings at West Thirty Street and West Twenty-Ninth Streets between Eleventh and Twelfth Avens, which will limit visibility of the subject building from the high line. Finally, I note that a large scope of related restorative work will be reviewed at staff level. I recommend approval. With regard to the overall project concept and the rooftop additions, I find that the overall project concept will be consistent with the multi-layered architectural history of the district, which resulted in an eclectic building stock and is referential to the layering of infrastructure that is unique to this historic district. That the building as originally programmed was not intended for continuous human occupancy and the proposed changes, including creating an open courtyard at the core of the building, constructing rooftop additions as supportive of the adapted roofs of this building. That the newly created central courtyard featuring backable folding garage doors and glazed wall systems will preserve the central rail tunnel and will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. And that the interior original timbers will be salvaged and reused at other locations at the interior and exterior of the building. That the presence of a visible addition on a seventy-nine story industrial building, which takes up an entire city block, is consistent with the history of actual and proposed changes at this building and the fact that many industrial buildings as a building type are typically altered and expanded to support changing uses over time. That the location of the twelfth Avenue rooftop addition over the stores twenty-one to twenty-six is consistent with the pre-stern location of a planned two-story addition that was never constructed. That the design of the twelfth Avenue rooftop addition featuring brick, steel and glass setback floors below cantilevered steel exoskeleton with tiered steel and glass setback floors at the roof and the rhythmic replacement, placement of a major framing, of major framing divisions is derived from the spacing of the stores below, which were based on the modular unit of railroad car. That the copper-colored steel framing of the addition relates harmoniously to the resurrected building and along with the dam's blazing assemblies at each floor also blends with the starred E-High building seen in the background from several, certain vantage points. That the proposed brick elevator and stair bulkheads match the high plating rhythmic placement of visible historic elevator bulkheads, further reinforcing the internal work of circulation and working tandem with the existing bulkheads to anchor the addition to the building. That the eleventh Avenue rooftop addition is small in scale and simple in design and is tucked within brick bulkheads and rooftop features, so it does not overwhelm the mass of the building. And that the roof of this and other buildings in this historic district feature water tanks and other physical mechanical equipment. Therefore, the proposed mechanical equipment and the dark standing steel metal screen is consistent with its industrial materials palette and blue state contacts. With regard to the window replacement and the recent reopens, I find that the proposed window replacement will provide for more consistent penetration at the primary facades, which currently feature a disorganized mix of replacement windows and some historical windows. That the multi-pane double-hung windows with fixed transoms at eleventh Avenue and the rounded corners that built in one and two, and fixed multi-pane windows at the nine-story buildings, buildings fifteen to twenty, will match the operation and configuration of historic windows and will return these buildings closer to their historic appearance. That the six-over-six double-hung windows of the majority of the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth Street facades will match or approximate the multi-pane configuration and match the operation of historic windows and will reinforce the solidity of the building. That the twelfth Avenue end of the building has been more highly altered by partial reconstruction and larger window openings than elsewhere upon the building. And therefore, the change in window configuration to fix single light will be reflective of this history of alteration and consistent with the contemporary design approach of the new addition at this side of the building, seeing conjunction of these windows. And that the new masonry openings of buildings eighteen and twenty will retain a portion of the decorative recessed brick paneling at the top floor, continue the pattern of the additional windows historically built at building sixteen and will not detract from the regular rhythm of masonry openings at six-story buildings. With regard to the modifications at the base of the building, I find that part of designation, a large majority of the loading bay openings throughout the building were modified from their historic round arched openings, had sill locations changed and were filled in with modern metal and glass storefronts over time. And therefore, the changes to the ground floor masonry openings and infill and installation of floor vents and bulkheads will continue this pattern of evolution. That the installation of flood vents will aid in long-term restoration of the building. That a limited amount of historic fabric, including shutting hardware, tie-rot plates and steel bunkers and brackets, will be removed as a result of changes in masonry openings, but that these features are not unique and the majority will be retained and restored or replicated. That the ground floor of West Twenty-Eighth Street, buildings twenty and twenty-two, historically featured and currently feature loading bays and the proposed, proposal to enlarge these openings for the loading bays and mechanical roofers allows for these utilitarian features to be concentrated in this location, thereby limiting disruption to the regular pattern of masonry openings. That the proposed recessed entrance infill at the round arch tunnel openings at Eleventh and Twelfth Avens featuring large open glass with minimal framing and salvaged wood plating reveals the presence of the open train tunnel that internally connected the twenty-five stores and repurposes the building, repurposes the historic wood timbers, evoking the original interior structure that is being removed. That although atypical for industrial buildings, the revolving doors will be recessed beneath the canopy at mid, at the mid-block street location or as part of unique and monumental entrance openings at the avenue facades and therefore will not detract from the building. That the proposed storefront infill featuring clear glass and in aluminum framing with a minimal profile and black finish is simple in design and will be consistent with the previously approved storefront master plan and will recall the open nature of the historic round floor loading bays. That numerous platforms, stairs, ramps and canopies of various sizes historically existed and continue to exist along all four street facades and have no distinct patterns in terms of placement and appearance. And that the proposed platforms and canopies will be in the simple design that is in keeping with the industrial character of the features found at the base of the building and is consistent with a previously approved master plan. And that although the street trees and bike racks are not a typical feature of this industrial historic district, there are some existing tree pits at this building along Eleventh and Twelfth Avens. And the addition of a limited number of street tree pits and numerous simply designed bike racks reflects the change in character of this historic district and building from wholly industrial to a mix of industrial and commercial. With regard to the lighting and master plan for signage, and this is the last section. I find that the specification of a master plan governing the future replacement and installation of signage will define types, locations, sizes, materials, finishes, armatures and hardware at all facades and will thereby promote consistency across the facades and will ensure that signage does not overwhelm the base of the building or detract from or damage any significant features of the building. That the proposed signage consisting of vertical projecting signs at the upper floors, marquee signs, painted wall signs, raised metal plaque signs, window sign and window signs will recall the variety of signage found historically at this building of the use of this age type and style. And that the proposed light fixtures are simple in design and have a dark finish or integrated into the design of the new windows, canopies and platforms, so they will not draw undue attentions to themselves.
Second.
Paul Baker. Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much.
Hey, everyone. We're going to move to the public hearing. The public is now starting with item number one. Twenty dash zero four, this is the one. The application is to install a bookend block. Go to the next three sixty. One ninety-two Columbia Heights in the West historic. The tiny Starborough Hospital in two thousand and six. The application is to construct a new bulkhead, fill out railings and enlarge the rear door.
Good morning, Commissioner McFarren. Your application is set. Your application is for one ninety-two Columbia Heights, B. T. Cut Street on North and Tarpon Street on South, with the red side faces Brooklyn and Promenade. The application is to install a glass railing, raise chimney and enlarge the rear porch through the, raising the chimney and the glasgow at the back. Please note that the rooftop bulkhead and pergola shown in the following presentation are now minimal visible and will be reviewed at staff level. Please also note that the work is only visible from the rear, from the promenade and the Brooklyn Bridge Park. The originating is for chimneys and railings. For this page, please note that the photos and the photo montages are filmed from the promenade and they are assumed for clarity. And then this is the chimney, this is the railing. So the rendering here is showing the chimney and the railing. On the right, please note that the chimney is here, the railing here. And please ignore this part, which is the pergola and the black line here, which is the pergola, which will be reviewed, which is reviewed on staff level. Please note that the following pages show some of the context, including several buildings with buildings. With some of the present provided by the applicant, please note that the commission has approved balcony at two hundred Columbia Heights, which is this one here. And also, the commission has also approved the following images, the balcony at number eight Montague Terrace and also changed the balcony to a fourth at two one four Columbia Heights, but both of these has not been paid yet. Architect Richard Lewis, from Richard Lewis Art, is here to present the proposal further and answer any questions.
Good morning, Commissioner McFarren. Richard Lewis. Hi, that's Lewis speaking. These are the stored, stored photo on the center. This is the existing rear, this is the front. This is the existing.
Sorry, did you get the mic hanging out there? We can get under it.
Okay.
We can pick you up or, or that.
So does, does the hanging one might be fine?
Here, okay. Okay, this is the existing, that's the center. Existing front facade. This is the existing balcony on the rear. This is the proposed balcony extension on the next floor up. This is the existing photo of the existing balcony. And this is a photo montage of the new roof balcony. And the underside of the balcony here will not, is made out of wood. Balcony is wood. The underside of this one will also be wood. The structure of this is actually supported from steel inside the building, so we're not bearing on an old cast-by balcony. The details of this not bearing on an old cast iron balcony, but details of this new one will match the details of the one below. Here are some detail blowups of the wood decking and details of the balcony. Existing section showing existing, uh, proposed extension. And at the roof, because of the extension, we have to raise these chimneys up to be, to be three feet above the adjacent bulkhead. And this is the glass railing that's being proposed, which is set back 30 inches from the actual building line and about seven and a half feet back from the, uh, bay. Existing section showing existing bulkhead. Here. Um, existing chimney. Uh, this is the proposed chimney, which you'll see in a moment matches the construction of the one on the adjacent side that's being proposed of that. Um, and again, three feet higher than the bulkhead that's adjacent. This is the section looking the other direction. These are the existing chimneys that have a brick base and metal extensions, which is what we're proposing on the opposite side. This is a blowup of the roof showing the glass railing set back with 30 inches and the set approximately seven and a half feet from the bay, which goes all the way up to the top. Again, a blowup of the same chimney extensions and the glass railing. This is a plan, uh, same thing, some sightlines. These are photos taken from the promenade showing the proposed chimney construction and the glass railing. That represents the glass railing, that represents the chimney extensions. Again, uh, that represents the chimney, that represents the glass railing. And if you look here, this is a photo montage that we've created that shows, we're showing a brick base with metal flues above it. And then the glass railing is shown here, and the building across the street at Columbia Heights creates a backdrop for this building, which we feel minimizes the impact of the glass railing. Another photo montage of the proposed chimney extension with a brick base. These are views from, uh, far way below P2B. There's quite a bit of visibility from far away. Again, more views. Uh, these are examples of other buildings on the same block that have balconies. This is the building question. Uh, this is a plan of the floor where the new balcony is being added. This is, this is an existing chimney that is not being altered, that's on the same building, and this is what we are trying to match on the extension on the one on the opposite side. These are our mockups that we made, uh, which include things that are going to be approved at staff level as well. Uh, some renderings which, uh, again, that's the chimney extension and, um... These are views of the front, and nothing that we're asking about today is visible from the front. And that's the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? We'll take testimony on that. Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Historic Issues Council. HTC claims the enlargement of the rear balcony to be well thought out. However, we suggest the applicant explore alternatives to clear tempered glass for the railing at the rear that is posed roof deck. Doing so would eliminate the possibility of glare. This would make a railing that is intended to be invisible quite be visible when confronting somebody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Uh, we do have a letter from the Brooklyn Heights Association supporting the application, however making two suggestions. One, that the porch should have some way to displace it from the original, and two, that the railing, the metal railing instead of glass. And we have a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Two recommending approval of the application. Do you want to respond to the comments about the railing, both the concern about the glare and also if this rain hits it as loud as it doesn't become more opaque less than perhaps? So, your concerns about its visibility and having its visibility as opposed to a metal picket or cable wire?
Well, I think there are, there are a few reasons why we would like to have the glass railing, and we were aware that this was something that is not loved by landmarks. So, in that regard, we should set it back further from the edge, and we feel that because of the extension of the bay window, it's not that, it's not really going to be that easy to see the central portion of the glass railing at all. We obviously want it to be glass from a viewpoint of view from the, from the other deck, which is probably not relevant for you, but that's the reason why we're proposing that. There are no real, you know, it's a, all the buildings on Columbia Heights that face the promenade are, have various different styles and features, so we didn't feel that this would be something that would be so much of an eyesore in terms of fitting in or not fitting in with the neighbors. The, as I mentioned before, the building that is across the street from Columbia Heights is the backdrop for the glass railing, and you don't, I think when you see sky through a glass railing, it looks a little bit different than when there's something so prominent behind it. And that backdrop, I think, will minimize the effect of the glass railing. Um, and the other, the other reason why we really wanted this is there, because it's a rooftop and the owners have children, um, they felt that the glass railing is something that's hard to climb on versus a metal railing which can act like a ladder and be very easy, even though they'll always be supervised up there, they were concerned about that. So I think that those are the reasons why we're trying to get this approved that way.
Could you clarify what, again, where it is in plan?
I think where it is here also in plan.
Yeah, and could the applicant also discuss, if, could it be moved back there and hopefully
In plan, this is the Columbia Heights street in the front, and this is the promenade side and back, and the railing is here, just across the back, and this is the portion that is set back about 30 inches, and this is the portion that's set back about seven and a half feet. So, from, you'll see it in this direction more than in this direction, because of the setback.
How far would it have to be pulled back to disappear?
Uh, probably another two or three feet at least, and then you probably, you might still see just the top of it.
Could you pull back a section of it instead of, you know, upwards angle it's raised?
Uh, at least a quarter of it, you won't see using that. Right. It's possible to try to do that. I think it, um, diminishes the deck just a little bit, and, um, I would want to go back to the owners and see if they would prefer to try to do that or switch to something else that's something approved.
Any other questions? So, that's how we're rushing to close the meeting.
Second.
Can you say that? Close. So, is our resident from the Heights Commissioner, Aron, speaking on this one?
Okay, um, I just say I know this house, it's been 47 years. So, I think this is respectful. At first I was a little gassed at just doubling the balcony idea in the back, but I think more of what we see back there now, um, which is responding to a condition which, of course, the houses were not built exactly, at least to, to experience with the public promenade there, that view, or its version, historically was always there, and I think these magnificent mansions took advantage of the view, um, always. Um, so, so I came to terms with the second balcony, I think it's all right. There are lots of other additions to balconies that have occurred at the time. I think some of which preceded landmarking of this, first of all, landmark districts, so that they're quite old. So I'm comfortable with it. I noted that the Brooklyn Heights Association wanted to distinguish it a bit, and perhaps working with staff, maybe very minor, if at all, leave that to staff. It's kind of like the second stare at Grand Central, very minor moves were made so that that could be distinguished, perhaps in more important building than this. So, so the real issue is the glass, the glass railing, and I think I can support it. It's supposed, uh, I would push it back, again, working with staff. The architect just suggested two to three feet. I think that's not going to compromise the use of attractiveness of that terrace on the roof, and if that minimizes it, I don't think it has to become invisible, but certainly it's minimized if you want it to kind of really get front and center in the current iteration, so I would, I would give that the, with that.
What, if, um, if the applicant wanted to explore doing a cable wire matching middle of the glass, would you be comfortable at its current location to, to the transparency of the building in the future?
Yeah, well, yes, I suppose. Uh, the applicant adroitly made the issue of children up there, and I thought, and I think, because it's pretty hard to climb vertically around pickets, um, which is, there's another issue which all of us who live even near this place know about. In fact, one of the, the street, I don't know if this is known by anybody, but Paragon, as it ends in Columbia Heights in 19th century, was called Cape Wrath, and there's a good reason for that, and you can experience it on any windy day, cold windy day, right now, as I did just the other night with my, it's time to walk out from Dumbo, you can hardly make it out the corner of Cape Wrath. So, um, so the glass would actually serve a functional purpose, I believe, as you see in a lot of other kinds of seaside places that the applicant can bring up, but I think that's another advantage. I really have no problem with the glass. I think it's actually superior to the, to the cave up in this case, so I would support it, just push it back a bit.
Mine?
The hardship of something living on the side of the lawn. Like that. Um, I, I agree with the point made in testimony that there will be reflection off of this. The space is west, the sun goes across the south, and once it passes the southwest point here, there will be an enormous amount of reflection from it. I, um, you know, there's the whole Darwin thing about the chain fence. I think the thing here is to move the glass back so that it's not visible.
I, I'm in support of, of this project, and I think it's appropriate in all counts. I'm actually excited to see when I read it done, just as I am when I'm walking up and down, I feel like I can see, and see it coming back, uh, so I have no problem, don't even need, for there to be even minor differentiations between old and new. And I actually, uh, support this, the glass, I understand the, the issue of keeping the weather out of bucket, buffering that. Um, I do think it can be moved back a little bit, but doesn't need to be without the glass we just approved in full view in previous applications, so I think this is fine.
And I think the applicant did raise a good point, that you don't see it against sky, you see it against other building, and I think that also, that's, that's. Others? Do people generally feel the railing should be pushed back, or then it's okay, is this? Have you got an opinion?
Of course.
Oh, well, did you have an opinion about pushing it up?
Because the glass railing is far from pushing back.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll make a motion for people with modifications to push the railing back in consultation with staff to minimize visibility, not to make it very difficult.
When you buy off, I can see that point in 236, 41, one line through Columbia Heights, Beverly Heights, Score, this way. Application is constructed of bulkhead, purple and red, and enlarged to more quick. I note that the green stars, scale, and material and details are many features which contribute to special architectural exploratory pattern of the company, this particular district. And also note that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural or historic feature or individual conjunction to confront facade of the house of the public that are fair. And the variety of sizes of torches and rear facades fringed in the promenade, and therefore the addition of a third storage with a porch will not hold attention to itself. That the new porch sector will not conceal a significant portion of the facade or extend with the upper two floors, thereby helping with the use of the explored facade and feature without supporting immunity of the block. That the proposed cast iron railing and brackets matching historic porch metalwork in terms of material, dimensions, design, detailed finish to support a unified porch design in keeping the character of historic torches and buried along promenade, promenade, public lane. That the leveling of the single basement opening and replacement of one over one window with a simply designed large glazed door finished to blend with the penetration pattern and partially obscured by the porch railing will be modest and harmonious of the evening. That the raised big chimney and metal flues will be simply designed typically in terms of material conceived for public therapy above the roof lines and the, of alternating pattern of the rear facade and the protective bays, the projecting bays, they are often then remain for secondary presence. And that the roofed up railings will be typical in terms of height. However, I find that the glass railing is highly visible when seen from the promenade high back of there, that the glass railing, the step car from the rear facade is visibility minimized, it's visibility from the promenade.
My favor, is it approved to that modification in Gregor Avenue?
Item number two, it's about this 20-0253, all right? Application for a certificate of appropriateness from Manhattan, Block 644, Block 655, Vans Ward Street, Vans Ward Market, Historic District, Renate Diller Store, Lost Home, designed by Joseph M. Dunn, and don't continue the study. Application is to modify cantilettal install.
Apartment is located from the north side of Vans Ward Street, in the intersection of 9th and 3rd Street. In 2017, two certificates of appropriateness were issued, a variety of work at the roof and facades, but in relation to this proposal, we included replacing the metal canopy, replacing the corrugated metal canopy roof with corrugated wire glass, installing light fixtures below the canopy, installing storefront woodfill, installing diamond plate covers over former cast iron top lights, and replacing the rat paper design. The proposal for today is to modify the canopy by removing a triangular section projected over the lot line of the neighboring property to the east, replace the improved, corrugated wire glass with tinted temper glass canopy, replace the frippended light fixtures with metal flat glass light fixtures, install a sidewalk cafe on removable deck featuring small integrated uplights and black metal panel planters with glass hedges. The applicant, Jackie Pudivalon of GPD Historic Preservation Consulting, and Mark Matuska of the architect from M Square Architecture are here to present the proposal and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for hearing this application. My name is Jackie Pudivalon, Preservation Consultants, on a project. I'll try not to repeat some things that Richard said, but since this building wasn't seen by, say, since 2017, some of you didn't see that initial approval. I think it's worth a while to go through some background on the building. So as Richard noted, this building is on Ganzaboard between 9th and Washington. It has an irregular triangular shaped lot, which gives it a sort of curved ground with the eastern portion of its facade, which is here, that curves here. There will be a restaurant at the ground floor associated with the work going outside, which is to turn this building into a hotel. So for that reason, because of the sub, the restaurant, we're applying for the sidewalk cafe awning alterations. In 2017, the commission approved the restorative facade work, which you can see here, sort of before and after, in what's in progress. The restorative work was approved at staff level, and other alterations were approved at hearing, including installing corrugated glass at the awning. RH has been undertaking very sensitive restoration work on this building advised by Dupont Building Conservation. For example, RH has been taking great care of the points and clean the building while maintaining historic ghost signs, these ancient facades, as much as possible. An obtrusive mid 20th century bulkhead has been removed, and an approximation of the original cornice has been reinstated. RH has been working to design sidewalk cafe that is as carefully considered as the restoration work has been. The design team seeks cues from the rhythm of the storefront openings and the valley details of the doors. Here is rendering of the proposed sidewalk cafe and awning, and awning alteration. You can note that the sidewalk cafe details are already embedded through DCA, by the way, so everything you see here today would also be approval by DCA. As Richard already described, we're asking you commissioners to review awning alterations, including the installation of flat tinted glass at the awning, gutters and leaders, truncating the awning at the eastern end of the building so that the new awning will not wrap that curved ground, but rather just end perpendicular to the building as it does at the western end, and install real gas lanterns hanging from the awning. And at the sidewalk cafe, the work includes installing composite wood decking, which will lessen the slope of the sidewalk to make seating more comfortable. The decking will be trimmed in black painted metal to match the planters, and will have some recessed lights set into it, as well as black painted metal planters with glass hedges and a low diamond plate ramp. Here is this western entrance to create an accessible entrance. Here just briefly to share with historic photos of the building. The building was constructed in 1887. It was built during the wave of commercial development of the 1880s that was brought on by the creation of the farmers' organic market in 1879. Here's some building, photos of the building prior to this project beginning, so you can see the existing conditions that were present at the awning and sidewalks. Please note that in 2015, there were already lantern style fixtures installed under the awning that were LPC approved, and there were 11 of those. Here are the previously shown and approved elevations from 2017, and previously shown and approved section and detailed drawings from 2017. You'll note that, as I mentioned, the awning originally had corrugated metal, very abused corrugated metal on the awning, and what was proposed then was corrugated wire glass. So here's the current proposal in elevation. As I mentioned, the awning is featuring a tinted flat glass, a new gutter at the front of the awning, as well as leaders at the east and west ends of the facade, the shortened awning at the eastern end, you can see it noted here, and the gas lanterns, which are located at each storefront opening to emphasize the rhythm of those openings. The sidewalk cafe again would feature a black composite wood decking with metal, a metal flat render, the metal planters, which define the area of the sidewalk cafe and building entrance, and a low diamond plate ramp at the accessible entrance over here. Here's the previously approved awning plan from 2017, though again, how the awning extended past the line of the building really, back then, and the now proposed awning plan showing the shortened awning to the east. Here you can see a section through the sidewalk cafe where you'll see the proposed flat glass, the gutter here, the downstairs, the gas lanterns. You can also see that the sidewalk has a slope, 5% slope. The removable wood composite decking is proposed to lessen that slope, to make it more comfortable to actually sit there in the sidewalk cafe. Note the uplights built into certain areas of that decking. And you can also see the 1'10" tall metal planters with 6" hedges, bringing it, so making sure that it's not taller than 30 inches allowed by DCA. And here is a section through the guesthouse entry. This is the main entrance into the building. Here in this section, you can see the low ramp and landing, noted here. This is the accessible entrance. Without this ramp, there would be a step there. The planters next to it are meant to frame this ramp and facilitate visual continuity of the diamond plate. And here's the proposed sidewalk cafe in plan. You'll notice the center entrance into the sidewalk cafe here, which then has openings between planters to go either side of the cafe. The building entrances at either end of the sidewalk cafe, again, are similarly framed with planters that run perpendicular to the building. The designers feel strongly that these planters appropriately frame the accessible features of the main hotel entrance to the west, and that the same treatment at the entrance to the east over here maintains the symmetry of these features on the sidewalk. So it creates a design comp, you know, a total design composition. This is just a close-up view in elevation, showing the features I described, replacement of the planters, which are meant to be deferential to the building by using planter bits that correspond to the storefront openings and columns, and by using a color and panel design that reflects the panels of the doors. And here you can see detailed drawings with proposed recessed lights and the gas lanterns. Also, we proposed flat tinted glass. This is coincidentally the same glass in each photo, just one is shown outside, one is shown inside against the white wall. Okay. And the samples shown here are also sitting on the floor of the table. Thank you, Richard. As well as a sample of the composite wood material for the decking. So gas fixtures. Originally in 2017, there were simple globe lights approved to hang under this awning. The design team wanted to do something they felt would be more historically appropriate to the building, given the period it was built, even though electric light was beginning in some very small portions of lower Manhattan. Unlike, this building had electric light until the early, very, very early 20th century. So it's most likely this building did have gas lanterns. So here are just some photos of some gas lanterns in other store districts. And additionally, there are also examples of flat glass awnings in this district, including flat glass awnings that have tinted to the glass. As you can see here, 46 Cansmore, which is across the street. This is 414 West 14th Street. Another awning with flat glass is up 9th Avenue, a couple of blocks around the corner. And this photo of 415 West 13th, you see an example of the type gutter and meter installation that we're showing in this proposal. And just to briefly give you some historic context for all this, you'll note that in these historic photos of nearby buildings, that there were, that awnings were often covered in flat sheet metal, and we believe that a flat tinted glass covering echoes that condition. Additionally, these photos show us how busy life was on sidewalks in this landmark district. When the businesses in the buildings were all into food production and distribution, you'll notice that the crates and pallets and boxes piled up on the sidewalks. And likewise, at 55 Cansmore, boxes and barrels associated with food production would have been stored on the sidewalk under the awning. People would have been making deliveries and taking goods away from this building every day. So just as, so just as activity in the sidewalks reflected in the businesses within the buildings in the late 19th and early 20th centuries, the same can be said today. But today is the sidewalk cafes that create this activity on the sidewalks. There are six sidewalk cafes in close proximity to 55 Cansmore, all within the district. And I'd just like to leave you with some of the random views. And with that, we'll take your questions and comments, please.
Are there any questions? At the hand you have entries to the building, you have a 112 slope, is that a handrail?
I'm going to let the architect answer that, so I'll be trying to make him his name. His name is Mark Matuska of M Square Architecture.
Good morning, Mark Matuska. To answer your question, a ramp under 60' of length is not required handrail. That said, it's good practice to create a barrier from the side so that people are on the edge. So in this case, we've chosen to use the language of the rest of the cafe to, so I'm there to.
So if you didn't have that plan, you'd have to have some kind of a railing?
We'd have some sort of railing or otherwise compound slope ramp that I don't think would be very adequate.
But as the applicant said, if they don't, if they're going up less than six inches, they have a corner to have a railing. And Cor, maybe you could also, just since the applicant presented photos of other unclosed sidewalk cafes, which were ins movable stanchions and ropes and planters can be approved under this, here in the back, just explain the difference of this one, this one's before us.
Sure, we do approve most sidewalk cafes at staff level, and indeed they are inevitably consists of movable post stanchions, planter boxes, things like that, sometimes connected by ropes or lightweight railings. This one, in our opinion, was different in that it was completely solid, wrapped around lodges and returned to the building, and it had a platform that also covered the area that formerly was the cast iron ball lights. In addition, there are a couple of those features pointed out on the bottom left of that image, which are not about the sidewalk cafe, but are more about symmetry of the frame of the entrance. So that, in our minds, made it something that was kind of above and beyond the typical sidewalk cafe. And I think it's also the staff's understanding that some sort of short raised edge could also accomplish the issue of having some of the rich aircrafts slip off the side and grab the cabinet, have something taller, but that's something we could explore further along.
Were all the other partners and defenses approved at staff level that are shown in the images page 21?
I'm not positive, but it would appear that they are the type we could do at staff level, given that it's just the planters or posts set upon whatever the sidewalk ambition may be.
Any other questions? Let's keep up with testimony. Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Historic District Council. Overall, HDC is pleased with this project, but objects to the proposed planters, which create a barrier that encloses the building and hinders the open nature of the street scene. The question of the creating of Ganzaboard is one which should probably be considered in a more holistic way, as the impulse of inserting career into this industrial and commercial market district seems somewhat discordant. Regardless of any possible philosophical concern, the positioning of the planters compartmentalizes the sidewalk, making the area appear more as a privatized extension of the building rather than a traditional sidewalk cafe with open access to the street. We suggest configuring the planters in a way that is less confined, so that the area may better read as a sidewalk cafe, and perhaps even revisiting the notion of such prominent planters altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application?
Do you have a resolution, Marissa?
Yes, please come to a closing. Thank you. Hi, my name is Dawn Rafferty. I live on Ganzaboard Street. I've been living there since the mid 80s. I'm also on the community board. I'm not going to represent the community board. I just wanted to really oppose this application. The gas lanterns are not historic at all to, you know, they're on carriage houses. There's no carriage houses in the area. Even they said the pictures they showed were not, were from other historic districts. The lanterns that were on a previous, you know, design years ago were much more industrial. They didn't let off as much light as these do. So I like the gold, but the gold lights were more historic to me. What was previously proved with this was much more in context. It's meatpacking district, it's gritty. This is a whole formalization of that area. The raised platform that goes on there is not a historic feature of the building. Yes, there were crates around, but not black painted solid structures with that. I'm not going to go into the boxwood, that's obviously not historic, but I don't have that gets dealt with. The uplights, I know there's walls in the sidewalks that have the lights that were supposed to shine down, you know, let light in and down. These coming up and going against the black hard surface just emits even more light. So I just really urge you to think about, not that this isn't a nice design, but the historic context of this in a breeding impact district. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. And then we have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board to recommend in denial of the application as citing that the features are not respectful of the style or nature of the historic district. You look to the spot.
So we appreciate these comments from the public, from HDC, from the person who spoke, from the community board. There are many circumstances. So let me first address HDC's comments, the enclosure with the planters. There is concern with the designers that they wanted to, as I stated before, create a way that was sensitive to accessibility, a way that would prevent a wheelchair from slipping over the side of the ramp, the western portion, you see here in the foreground, and then just wanted to create symmetry in the design by using, employing the same planters lining the entrance over there as well. So it's really, you know, it's, it's a design intent, and to be friendly to people with challenges to mobility and also create a holistic design that they think is pleasing. Secondly, one complaint I often hear about sidewalk cafes is that they tend to bleed out. You know, you start with one defined area, and then there's suddenly some tables and chairs happening where they shouldn't be. At least this way, the RH feels they're going to have a defined area where you'll know exactly where the sidewalk cafe is, and there won't be possibly in the future, I'm sorry, to place tables and chairs elsewhere, because, you know, this is it. This is where they're trying to grow up to. Regarding the member of the public's comments, the platform, the decking, is really not going to be perceptible. It's going to be trimmed in metal at perimeter, exterior perimeter, so that it would just meld into the look of the metal, the metal planters. That's the design intent. Secondly, the lanterns not being stored, you know, honestly, I really couldn't find any photos showing me where there were exterior light fixtures on this building, but we know it must have been. So they're, so one can only assume that given the period that this building was built, any lighting would have originally been gas lights. And also the concern about the brightness of, you know, the total effect of all these lanterns. Gas light, if you've ever been past a gas lantern, it's very dim. I think the 19th century must have been very, very dark, because, you know, even if you don't have gas lanterns everywhere, it's really not doing much for you. So the photos I showed were. So the photos I showed. I took that to the glass lantern. Yes, right there. If you can see, and I'm not a professional photographer, but I took these photos, and what I was trying to show them, and just in addition to the fact that there are glass lanterns, I mean, gas lanterns, in historic districts, was the fact that they're much dimmer than the electric lights you see near them. So if you look at these photos, you can see electric lights nearby that are much, much brighter, even though they're in the background than the gas lanterns in the foreground. And I think that's all we want to say, is that we're trying to create a total design composition that's pleasing and clearly defines the sidewalk. Great. Any final questions? Okay, let's have a question. Yes, Diana.
The lantern design doesn't really, however, look like the ones that you showed as approved or etc.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there'd be that. It's not the design of the lantern.
In other words, there's safety, there were a group of ones that were approved. Let me show that, please.
Well, the design of the lantern. So I apologize for having this conversation. Sorry to question. But the design of this lantern, that's what you're asking me, that commission? Purely a design decision by the designers during the project. They wanted something that would call it a historic gas lantern, but something more, at the same time, more pared down than modern.
And another issue was raised by the testimony was the uplighting. I don't want to be a plantress.
The uplighting is intended to just give a little more light on the sidewalk to help people as they walk by it, mainly because the gas lanterns are not expected to give off very much light. I wish there was a way to quantify how much gas lanterns give off in terms of lumens. We actually, you know, talked about how to do that, but we couldn't come up with anything. Any last question? Someone wish to continue?
All the paper.
Discussion.
Yes, I am. As I mentioned before, when this building has come up before us, and this anecdote is not very relevant to say again. I lived on the top floor, the whole top floor, in the 80s of this building. And when Floraum was, you know, had tried on the stove since like 7:00 in the morning, I don't know if it was served or tried. It's okay. I just, when we talked earlier on the Bronx Project, the Bronx Project, about sense of place, and I just want to say that the sense of place is so utterly changed, lost. I'm certain that my period there in the 80s was much changed from what it was in the 1920s. Nonetheless, it really is so changed, absent that quality that certainly made it what it was and designated it in the first place. I just don't really know what we're talking about. You know, why are we seeing this? What are we approving it by? Maybe help on that, please.
Okay, so I think the designation of this district is interesting, because it, unlike other districts, in some ways, it talks a lot about the waves of change. There were many uses that was over from the 19th century through the 20th century that resulted in a lot of modifications to the buildings. And so in some ways, the sense of place was defined by all of this change. So that is, you know, something that, you know, the commission at the time was, and I think one of the first big approvals was Diane Montherst of area to recognize that there could be more change because of this history of change or the sense of place. And I said that, I do think that the commission has made an effort to try and keep the district having a little bit more of that gritty feel. And while it does have a residential period in its history, there are also industrial market periods here. And so I think some of the things that the commission, if you're looking at, is the quality, the residential, commercial, industrial quality of the changes. And then the sort of, in some ways, not trying to take away that kind of badass grittyness that it had with its functions and uses many shifts at times. I don't know if that helps at all. Corey, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just thinking with the question with the sidewalk cafes before, and I think in part, the reason we do so many at staff level again is that we just have these sort of loose, somewhat open elements sitting on whatever the sidewalk may be. It just kind of breeds of something that's apart from the historic building, the sidewalk, something that's temporary. And again, I think we saw this as something different, because it really formalizes and captures so much of the base in a way that makes it feel like it had some sort of formal area way or yard or something like that, and in fact, it never did, other than the ball lights in front of it. And the other part of it is that by coming back close to the building, it actually sits in front of some of the cast iron elements and other features where they engage the ground, which is also another thing that we look at a lot of times, is there any visual effect or something, like a factor in some ways that can track for those features of the building? So that may be another way to think about it.
Great.
I couldn't put my finger on the thought of this either until the excellent testimony from the woman who lives across the street. And from Ali's memory of Floraum, never had tried there, but I did interfere. Of course, I know she lived on the top floors. In any event, there ain't no gritiness left here, that's for sure. It's just all, it's almost a, for me now, it's a tyranny of too much good design all together. So there's something about the sum of the parts, everything's so tasteful, so, that it just seems wrong. So I think somehow, some of it's got to just go away. Some of it maybe is okay, maybe the lighting is, even in dark glass, maybe all right. The gas lanterns make it feel, you know, like a real gas light district in San Diego or somewhere. I don't know. It just seems false. And privatizing the sidewalk cafe to this extreme of good design, but it's just wrong. It's just not, it just shouldn't be so privatized. And a little off white is kind of the final clue of the glass, I think. So I don't know. I think it's just too much, too much good design, honestly, in this district. Maybe upper side or something, but this is just not the place that it should be. So completely by design, or good design, I don't even mind that. Anyway, I don't know. It's a little vague what I'm saying, but there's something of it. The commemoration of everything is questionable.
Diane.
Yeah, I agree with the previous commissioners' remarks, the projects in. I think that the, the canopy, I think, I feel that the sidewalk cafe really creates a barrier, and it's very heavy. It has its, you know, its hollow appearance. It doesn't look entirely, it looks permanent, which is part of the main problem, I think. I also think that the lighting, while it's an interesting conceit to try, doesn't really evoke for me gas lighting. And then it drives supposedly the need for the uplighting. So it should be a different kind of lighting that does not require uplighting along the edge of the, on this thing, whatever this initial will be. But it's, it's, it looks too long and looks too solid, and then it's, and it looks, it looks like it's overlighted as a result of this, you know, idea, which is a nice idea, but this is causing other problems. So go back to something, I mean, I don't know if the lighting lights that we've been throwing for and need five would be sufficient without uplighting, I would hope so, but something else that's been broken in this group, or that we can see is appropriate, which particularly the classification as far as the lighting, not F, the current lighting, uplighting, and really light enough to the appearance of this, so it is not, it appears to be more transparent, or you can feel like you're, you know, whether it's really temporary or ancient.
Mike.
I agree with my fellow commissioners on many of the points. I'm okay with the changes to the lining. I think that the character for which this district was designated has been missed by this design, beautiful design, but wrong. But the, Jackie said something about the cafe spilling out onto the sidewalk. One of the great things about knowing the Floraum back then is we get run over by a hand truck because of the chaos that was going on, and the boxes piled up on the sidewalk. There is a formality that's been created here that I think misses that sense of place that this neighborhood is. And I agree, I don't know if in my lifetime I'll ever be able to approve uplighting in the Gansford District. And I also think that, you know, maybe we should pretend it's a little bit later and put in electrical lighting, so that we don't have to worry about the number of lumens that we're dealing with.
I agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far. I think one thing that also this design takes away from is the reading of the actual building the way it comes down to the street. And I think having these perpendicular walls of planters hitting the building is problematic in that it, it sort of is trying to extrude the building onto the sidewalk. And I think a building needs to be designed onto the street, and whatever this barrier is, is something much, much more, much lighter that allows you to leave the entire building.
All right, so I think everybody's sort of feeling the same way about this. So I think we're all taking action today, and we'll have you rethink your design and make it more lightweight or transparent and a little more respectful of the industrial and commercial character of this district. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, we're going to move to item number three. This is LBC 20 Nash 04744. Application for a certificate of forgiveness of the road that happened in 644 block 54, 812 Little West Paul Street, potential of historic history. Renegy Row House, commercial ground, core built since 1829, altered in 1855. Application is to install tree pits on the sidewalk.
Good morning, commissioners. Dana Tossen, Department of Preservation and Staff. The application will be oriented to 812 Little West Paul Street, Governor's Row House, located on Little West Paul Street between 9th Avenue and Washington Streets in the Gansford Market Historic District. The proposal is to install two tree pits at the sidewalk. Commissioners will note that due to its industrial character, this is a district in which LBC regulates modifications to the sidewalk, including the installation of tree pits, and the paving tail at the sidewalk is question based on material concrete. This map shows existing grandfathered and commissioned fruit trees within the district. The rectangular symbols along 9th Avenue represent movable planters that were approved by the commission in January 2014. And the various light green tree symbols represent tree pits that were approved by the commission in March of 2019. The two red encircled indicators here show the proposed locations. This is the existing proposed elevations, tax photographs, designation photo, and the existing conditions at the sidewalk. This is the rendering of the posters installed. And a wider angle view showing those two trees here. The tree guards will match others approved throughout the district by the bid in the district. The applicants are here to answer, please.
Are there any questions for the applicants? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application? We have a resolution from the committee board to recommending approval of the application by the Parks Department standards, and that the guards will be consistent with others that are approved of the tree guards. And final question, people will be closing here.
At one point, we were eating too many trees. This is a district with other trees, it's like so, they're vision, identification, etc. So at some point, you know, we don't want to control the park as well and provide the side. Where is it off when we said?
You know, I think, yeah, this is, this was, started in the 19th century as a residential district. There may have been trees, I don't know, back then, maybe they disappear as it becomes more commercial. And maybe one way to think about it is, you know, sort of which buildings are they in front of? In front of buildings that were one of the earlier buildings, or in front of the 20th century. I do think that, another question would be whether it would affect the canopies. And I think, I think that canopies, many of the ones that we've approved have been set back from the third line because of, to their DOD requirements. I think it's DOD requirements. We've approved many that are set back from the third line. So those entries may not include them, but that may be another thing to think about.
Not that it should be a tree, that's because, of course, but I think. It doesn't need to wash the plastic here.
All the paper.
So, yeah. Although they were not present in the district originally, I mean, you know, there are new changes that do have a lot of credit to commission, such as enhanced accessibility, and I'm not wanting to necessarily equate it to. You know, the effect of trees on our environment is extraordinary. And I think that we're, part of our mission as a general agency might be to also see some need for this aspect, this aspect of city living to be something that we may, you know, increase in some of this square, where it works a lot. I do think one of the things that we might consider is adding one of the tree pits moved so that the, it doesn't, the trunk doesn't obscure the focus, which is the case in one of the two here. So from my point of view, with regard to the perspective of looking at the building, if it really affects the perspective of the building, and I think, you know, I recommend, I think that the new tree that will, to, you know, to see the color. But I feel like that, I actually just think that it's appropriate to permit trees in the district, because I think it's something important for the environment. And maybe that's, I guess, not a landmark issue, but there are other things that we're putting in that are true to the landmaking priority.
I think not organic, sort of what, I really like to, okay, it's the fact that it's a 19th century form of residential building.
I just want to cover up the fact that it seems, and let me know if I'm wrong, is that all of the newly planted trees since 1918 are on 14th Street, Floraum, and 9th Avenue. So that's very different. These would be the first in the area that we've been looking at in the recent, in the previous section.
Yeah, but I can't say that's by design. I can't say we made a conscious decision in the past to live at 94th Street. I think those are just for the application of the paint. I'm just asking for the utility.
Yeah, I think they're not discretionary. I mean, these are needed because of quality housing program. So if for some reason it's a radical idea that I brought up, which I'm willing to retreat from, I'll turn it back to them.
Commissioners, just to clarify one point, the, it is not actually for quality housing, but it is a building code requirement that has to do with the amount of renovations that occurred at the building, triggered it being reviewed as equivalent of a new building. occurred at the building, triggered it being reviewed as equivalent to a new building, and with that is a permit to plant trees. So the options are to do it on a proposed or to send them offsite somewhere else, but one of those two things has to have to do with the nature of the building.
So they could send them somewhere else.
The applicant should address that, but that is our overslow.
I mean, I don't think it's serious enough, but I just wanted to bring up, Diane brought up a critical point, that there are issues, and they always sort of say strictly limited by view of my agenda five minutes ago, there are obviously the only landmarks issues. And I think if you make the case that on an only landmark review in this district, maybe there should be two or three in other places. However, there are bigger societal composite ideas that I think a lot of, go ahead, I'm just going to use the word Trump, the idea of a whole landmarking. And, you know, I think we're going to get used to seeing, maybe not prominently, but seeing solar collectors on roofs, we're going to get, and we should get used to seeing all sorts of things that we might not have approved forty years ago for universal accessibility. So there are some things that people have, societies needs that suggest that there are issues, not just landmark issues.
Commissioner, I think it's important to say.
I could disagree with Professor's notion, but I don't think, it's not about trumping landmark issues, it's about what constitutes a landmark issue. And all these changes are being viewed within the context of what the law requires, which is, are they appropriate? And just as we can decide that enhanced accessibility, done the right ways, appropriate, okay? And it also addresses various needs that maybe weren't so widely understood or accepted thirty years ago. Similarly, environmental issues that come to the fore today, which thirty years ago may have been seen as not so present, and would have resulted in the Commission saying inappropriate, today we can look at those things and say, just as we allow air conditioning through all buildings, we allow huge condensers on top of buildings, we allow bite rats, we allow all sorts of things, recognizing that our areas under our jurisdictions evolve and adapt and are part of a better city, it doesn't mean they're not being viewed in the lens of appropriateness, and even if you can find them appropriate, just looking at how they relate to scale, design, color, and things like that. So I think that, I'm not saying that it mandates a particular outcome or if it's a particular case, but I don't, I just think it's not worth, it's not a good idea to think of these trumping or being outside of landmark issues. These are what you do. This is why you're here, to look at these hard questions and decide how or if or in what way they can be appropriate.
And so similarly, you know, in decades, two, one or two decades ago, the Commission, this Commission had many discussions about trees and so-called NABECA, and agreed at that time that trees were appropriate in those historic districts as part of the adapting nature of those historic districts, and so I think this would be similar. But if we did want to think about it more carefully, I think we don't have to say we blanket approval of the board, and every street is a district, but it works in this particular location in my mind as a good building type.
Point of information, the tree guard itself, is there any issue on that, or how do we decide?
So, yeah, in this case, the other trees, I might understand, have the same designed tree guards. Sometimes you see them sort of eighteen inches high, you know, but this is a more industrial look that I think the bid has chosen to use in trees elsewhere in the district.
Can I just say one idea, sorry not to prolong this philosophical discussion, but I think it's a really interesting way of appropriate. And I just wanted to say again how the word appropriate, which is at the heart of our law, everything we talk about, how terrific that word is, because it allows, what Mark just said is certainly, certainly well reminding us very well, but it also, appropriate is different things in different eras. It's literally what six people are at this table say every Tuesday, but it allows different things to be, so it encompasses, I think, your definition of appropriate, because what we didn't see as appropriate thirty years ago, we do now, it's all allowed. Whereas the Secretary of the Treasury standards or formalized rules that are hard to change, but you can change as society changes, and it's part of the rules of law, I think.
Hey, I also just wanted to add a couple things that might be more appropriate, some parrotines, there's solar panels, you know, smart houses, the removal of fire escapees, you know, there are things that, yeah, the Commission hasn't always permitted, or they've chosen to look at the appropriateness in particular contexts, and we are changing some of those things, or things that weren't submitted because they weren't around before, now trees were around before, but, I mean.
Okay, all right, so I think, I just want, may I, may I? Yes. I'm sort of going back and forth a lot about the previous application and the extent to which it, it's some of the concerns that we had earlier in this one. And in my mind, back to the issue of sense of place, I, you know, I want to make sure I want to think about whether it is critical to approve the one and not the other, or it's a test or not, but I think that the sense of place, which is to say, the adaptive living in a place that had a different kind of character, is, I think, expressed through and affirmed through the planting of trees in an area like this. Whereas in the previous example, we saw this sort of this kind of ironing out, I don't know how to describe it better, of the material qualities that inform that sense of place. So I think there really is a distinction, and I'm trying to warm through that, but I think that the trees here, and frankly, more of them, to Fred's original point, might actually support the sense of, the transformed sense of place, but not the forgotten one, not the erased one, ironed out of that one.
How to affirm and change to the architectural fabric. Because just to add to that, that comment that he made, I feel like as the, first point, I very much believe that we should plant trees, but we just unharmed it. But I feel that one thing that didn't happen in that last application was that, that ran a sort of like a bad year. It was kind of, it was very heavy, even the material, it was all about, you know, heat out on some level, and the trees still speak to like velocity, and you can see the landscape, you can see the buildings, you can move through the neighborhood in a way that I think, as you were saying, still retains the fabric and the sense of what the place is, because these buildings are not changing. And, you know, thanks to the fact that this, the neighborhood has been landmarked, and I feel that's an enhancement in many regards, as opposed to enhancement in a, from a very deep perspective, and, you know, down to, you know, a street level perspective. I do think that Diana also made a good comment about the positioning of the trees, and that the one on the left, I think, should be moved a bit to unlock the column. That's it.
And, I want to dissent to you. I feel like, I think in this case, these two trees are appropriate, but I'm concerned about the creep that could happen in this district for trees, you know, they seem foreign, and as part of that sort of changing of time, I worry that this, it'll change the character of the neighborhood. So I think that these two, because they're for this small scale, like in century building, it's okay, there are two on the corner, but I think mid-block, trees, we might not get that day.
I agree with Ann as well, and you said it yourself, it can depend on the individual building. In this case, it can be appropriate. These guys aren't putting these trees in to save the planet, they're putting these trees in so that it looks pretty. When we get to the point where we're putting in trees to save the planet, we're in big trouble anyway. And so we'll all be in favor of it, but I agree, in this particular case, it's appropriate. I will be guarded against the creep forever, and I think you said it perfectly, depends on the building.
Well, I think it's though also, just one more point, there are probably going to be some trees on the left, so, I don't know, lock people set somewhere else. Just a thought. Okay, well, this has been a great discussion, so, and I think we have support to move forward with this particular application.
All right. Now, Mark, thank you for the clarification. I was getting lost in the two standards we set today, the Ruskin Husky standard for trees, and then of course, there's the tyranny of good design, I want to avoid that, but I think we end up in a good place. The matter of LPC twenty zero three seven four four, eight twelve Little West Paul Street in the Gansburg Market Historic District. The application is to install tree pits at the sidewalk. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Gansburg Market Historic District. I further note that two, two, street trees must be planted in order to this address to meet the requirements of the quality housing program, and that the trees may either be located in front of the building or at an alternative offsite location. I finally note that they near the sidewalk is uncutted concrete. I recommend approval noting that the historic district is characterized by ways adapted to be used that significantly changed the appearance of many buildings throughout the nineteenth and twentieth centuries, and the proposed work will be consistent with and will reflect the district's long history, numerous areas as a place of dwelling, industry, and commerce, but this historically residential building, while altered, still retains a residential character thereby supporting the presence of trees in front. That location of trees at the curb will not exclude the installation of a canopy on the building in the future. Amazing that they end the trees causing us to burn up people's paper. The presence of tappings in the streetscape will be consistent with the types of modern installations commonly seen in the dynamic group scape of this historic district and on the High Line Park, as well as the existing trees along Ninth Avenue and Fourteenth Street. That the proposed treatments will be installed at concrete sidewalks and therefore no historic dating material will be affected by these rotations. However, the proposed work will not attract from the architecture or historic character of the streetscape in the Gansburg Market Historic District, and I recommend that the applicant work is to have a precise location of the trees.
Hall paper? Any opposed? That's it, good. Thank you. Continue your work with Diana.
Okay, we're going to move to the last item of the day. Item number four, LPC twenty dash zero five seven five five, application for a certificate of appropriateness of a road that has been used block eight fifty, block seventy-five, and due by Broadway, and is lying in historic district. The tile style storefront is on the fifth, the promise of opening on sixteen twenty-two. Application is to modify storefronts, install signage, block windows, and clocks.
Okay, good morning Commissioners, Richard Lemon, Preservation Staff, and Slidover House. We have the nine thirty-five Broadway at the top of the block, with street facades over three streets, you have Broadway, East Second, and Fifth Avenue. As you can see, the photograph of its more famous neighbor, if that I remember, details here are highlighted, nineteen ten, there was a significant amount of signage all up the facades of the building and even on the roof. The storefronts have gone through a number of changes. You can see through the details of the original storefront facades with the cast iron columns and details, with the nineteen forties tax photographs that are all flat. In addition, the designation photographs, you can see the alterations here. You can note on the two corners, the provision of two circular clocks, which are not present in the nineteen forties tax, so they're considered a modern addition, but grandfathered in project designation of historic district. Now, in section ninety-eight, there is a study of appropriate issue for replacing the modern storefront infill with gray green painted wood storefront infill doors, restoring the cast iron columns, installing GFRC capitals on the columns, new display windows, and a flagpole was installed at that location, it's longer there now. In addition, as I said, the clocks itself are not a historic issue, but a one. The proposal, we'll go into the more details that were around that by the technical presenter, but just to show you a plan, here's the Broadway, East Second, and Fifth Avenue on here. Install pin mounted halo backlit metal signage at the corner sign band above the entrances here and here, and then in the middle area on East Twenty-Second Street, install circular metal blade signs at each of the, at the corner sign band on East Twenty-Second Street. Refocus the clocks and replace the clock faces and dials, install the cove lighting around the room mirrors, the beach and the clock boxes, and attach thirty-six inch tall fiberglass ceramic sculptures with a gold scale finish on each. And also install four flagpoles, two on the Broadway and then two on the Fifth Avenue side at the second floor adjacent to the central clock. Also to modify the storefront infill at one bay to create a serving window, we want some French casings above the glass pan. And finally, within the interior of the store, propose creating two sort of storefront victories at each on East Twenty-Second Street, providing five bays and three bays along Fifth Avenue, four to ceiling partitions. The one on East Twenty-Second Street will be set back fifty-two and a half inches from the display window, and at the Fifth Avenue, we set back forty-one inches from the display window. The applicant, Mary Corazza, is due to express his here to present the proposal and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner, I'm, good morning Commissioners, I'm Mary Corazza. We are the architects working and presenting on the application of Warner Brothers for the application that Commissioner has described. We'll take you now through some of the more details, iconically, of how we plan to apply for the various operations that Commissioner has mentioned. I would say, I'll kind of remind you just again of sort of the billboard that the building was previously. We have allowed what, five hundred square feet of signage that we feel were well below. We've gotten to know through the tendency so far, the legacy owner of the building, who inherited the building from his father, he's given us a nice history of the building in that, yes, the building creates the latter building as we know, but over time, the building enabled to lease it out, he scarfed a number of different storefronts, to have multiple tenants on the third floor, as much as five different tenants. So I'd like, just to reiterate the modern storefront, if anyone wants to see, here on the side, the lack of cast iron in the corner, it was an all pass corner, that was set up and kind of put back to recall that original nature of cast iron, kind of play on the district. Moving forward, we will take, here actually, you can see as well, the multiple tenants here with individual signage, actually in the transom window, but that it was very much not a single tenant building at the time of the tax vote period. We'll take you around the building and show each of the specific items within the proposal, starting here on Broadway, so north is to our right. We have, similar to Restoration Hardware, it was the previous tenant, we have brand mark signage over the two we have brand mark signage over the two entry doors you see here. I'll just kind of clarify that really aside from the addition of the dragon which you mentioned above the existing clock, which I'll speak to later, and the two flag poles, there are no other alterations planned above the ground floor here. The existing building entry on Broadway will remain in full. To sort of zoom in on the actual area of work here, we show the storefront window where it's currently insulated glass units that we will be replacing one of at this location with this French casement window with a back filmed on the interior surface panel, fixed panel below that service window shown here. We have the new pin-mounted signage. We are trying to, the original storefront isn't, the storefront is modern and not original. We're trying to sort of preserve it in its nature and now trying to kind of graffiti or rearrange it in that I think a lot of people would agree somewhat in keeping with the original architecture and the variety of styles present on the windows. So, we felt kind of leaving it alone might be the best gesture to kind of re-appropriatize the building for the new tenant. So, you'll see, we'll show this in each of these items in a little more detail. But here again is that clock. We'll show you a bit later, but we're leaving it and kind of replacing it inclined in kind. For that, a little more as we move forward. The original, this, sorry, building entrance is to remain. Here you see the new service window. There's glass panel, fixed glass panel below. Doors are to remain in location and kind. This is the new logo signage of the existing door. The blade sign indicated there's two on 22nd Street, which we'll see next. And then, the venue sculpture piece on top of a restored clock base and new clock mechanism. Moving to 22nd Street, you see the central pin-mounted signage here. Again, the three pin marked signage. We have halo light to show you those details of attachments. And then, the two clocks you're seeing on elevation, this is viewed from South on 22nd Street. And then, here, you see that little larger, just to call attention to each of those locations. Within the sign band, we attach the blade signs. They all have an antique brass finish to try to stay in keeping with something period. Here you see an iteration of the kind of fixed showcase window along 22nd Street. Because the view is sort of short on to 22nd Street where the main pedestrian traffic drives on Fifth Avenue and Broadway, we felt it may be a place of excitement to add a showcase window here that's full height, so it can be a little bit more thematic and sort of move it back to the number of tendencies that existed prior, rather than being one march, one tenet that the building was from, was coming through. And then, here we show that Fifth Avenue elevation, which is very much a mirror of Broadway with the clock, existing clock remain, but we drag in sculpture here on the march on top of it. All of these are, this is a rest door, so we have tenets below. And then, the rest door, that were all remaining intact. No changes other than the addition of two flag poles at elevation. And then rendering, kind of capturing the ultimate aesthetic of that. I think the dragginess, a little voidy represented here in that it's to be three feet tall and maybe possess better elevation. And this is the showcase window that Fisher mentioned, the second one off of Fifth Avenue. Very much similar to the two neighboring buildings also have showcase windows that are going to be today. Here we show the projection of said pin-mounted signage above the entries. We are trying to keep this picture moving here intact, even though it's not original. You can see kind of the modest aesthetic in the security gates here. It's that in this kind of whole section has been reconstructed. It's original, the original building here. So, we show projections here where we're remaining to ask this picture moving just enough that we can still have a clock moving. Same effect on 22nd Street. This is that central signage, just straight in the middle. Another reference image of kind of the desired effect of lighting, sort of subtle backlit, sorry, halo light there. Again, in the same antique brass. These are the two blade signs that were shown on 22nd elevation at the east and west end. They are one foot diameter and within the line of the existing, the existing kind of span row corners. These are the existing clocks that, as they exist, you can take note of the brand marking of Restoration Hardware on the clock base. As I mentioned, they don't tell accurate time now, which we would like to make them be a proper clock. And you can see this sort of halo brand mark on the top of the clock that would obviously be removed to make a place for the dragon sculptures that were presented. We are trying to keep those as light as possible to reuse the bolted connection of the plate, so there will be no new attachments to the building. Though I think this is a great photo to show kind of the legacy of signage on the building. If you look closely here, you can see all the punctures of that original corner signage here. And then, see it again up in here, there are a number of scarring. Here, this was kind of an illustration we could find to give us idea of the scale of the previous proof flag on Broadway. And then, here you can see some of that staining from that old flag to kind of prove its existence here, the those two clock locations. Here's a better sense of scale on the proposed sculpture of pin-headed place on top of the clock. The clock would be very similar in its lighting to the lobby of this building where there'd be lighting around the circumference of the clock. It's the same metal finish. We're trying to reuse the housing of the clock, but rebuild its workings and the faces of the clock to be more appropriate for this tenant in place of previous tenants. Clock base. Here you see the details of the service window that we showed on Broadway here. So, this is the fixed panel. And then, the casement inswinging windows shown here, planned on Broadway. It would have a translucent film here to the back of the face, as I mentioned, but we feel we keep the same reflection as the rest of the sun. This is just some imagery to give kind of a sense of positioning on the sort of retreat showcase windows where the tenant would like them to be kind of theatrical in nature, or at least have the ability to be more destination similar to Fifth Avenue showcase window here that we can take from all day season. And then, this was a section of the two showcase windows and the respective setback distance of the last finish. The pilaster is all existing. This buildout is all existing to remain from previous tenants. So, we're just kind of enlarging that, the depth of that buildout to account for any of the train. And then, this was the one on 22nd. And then, here you see it on Fifth Avenue. This is how we pull the heights for the proposed flag locations. You can see the bracket attachments. There's four of them, which we keep in kind for the proposed flags. This is the one that existed here on Broadway. And then, here are some examples, maybe a flexibility of the building, where we show the linear feet of this storefront, as well as the number of flags. We're at about 470 linear feet, and we're proposing four flags. This building is one block south on Broadway and 21st Street, 200 feet, four flags. And the kind of logic continues, but we feel it's kind of in keeping with the length of the storefront. And then, the gesture of that flag pole location and expected flag dimension to kind of keep it away from the character of the sign band, but yes, they under the height of the second floor windows.
Are there any questions?
So, I think, let me play addition as well. We've got total about nine signs, including the flags, not including the two dragons and then these five, we know with the tree. We have nine signs. Is that right?
So, if I count the last one, one flag pole, if we count the flag pole as a sign? No? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Not yet, correct. Thank you. And the total aggregate area of that signage is around 65 square feet against the five hundred, allowable.
Are there any other questions? I think all of this, but yes. What is good practice to do same with them?
I think too, there will be a future sidewalk cafe, but they want to help kind of bring activity to the sidewalk. And kind of, it's not a competition with the adjacent park that exists one block north and on the other side of 23rd, but I think it's hoping to connect the activity of the park and offer drinks and refreshments for the summer season.
Thank you. Dick Dussman, Brittany Thomas.
Brittany Thomas, Historic Missakes Council. HTC claims that the proposed amount of signage should be excessive and has concerns that the shiny gold cloth attachments will detract and distract from the historic streetscape. In addition to recommending an overall reduction in signage, we implore the commission to advise and monitor the attaching of any signage to the cast iron on this distinguished historic building.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We have a resident from the 45th recommending denial, finding that the signage is non-contexible, overwhelming, and all considerations would be to the integrity of the district.
I'd just like to add that if I could go to a photo, the existing span row that you see across here is not cast iron. Only these are reproduction cast iron, the actual completed column, which we are not planning to provide any new attachments to.
Any other questions? We have them there. And let's have a motion that goes in here. All there. Okay, so, it's interesting, I don't know if they're working on this one, Restoration Hardware, heading to the states. And it is true that as much of the cast iron was restored using JFRC, it was a process. And at that time, the commission approved what flag pole per, for that one on Broadway, I believe. So, yeah, so what's before us is the cumulative amount of signage and type on three facades. I do want to note historically, as the applicants showed, the Ladies Mile Historic District, it was a commercial district, and that as such, the buildings had a lot of signage, and particularly in the corner area and the corners, the visibility. And I think in some ways, the dragons are sort of consistent with these corner signage and kind of like novelty signs, the barbershop pole or the sewing machine that reflected the business inside. But I think we should have a discussion about the cumulative effect of flag poles along with those signs. And the other thing that we have to address are the vitrines that are behind the glass, and that's because they are full height and they return and sort of block out the windows. If they were freestanding, it would not be something to be before us as their material. But it's the way that they block out the openings that puts it before us.
Well, I appreciate their goal here in using the Harry Potter theme to really reach out and grab the pedestrian. And I also appreciate the modest size of some of the main signs. However, on the vitrines, I don't know the solution to this, but, and again, I appreciate what the goal is, but it's, and I also appreciate that there's a lot, there was a lot of signage in this area, but it's very much a Times Square kind of approach to reaching out and meeting the consumer. And so, I think we need to figure out a solution to that. I don't find it appropriate as is. The cumulative amount of signage is, I think, excessive. And I think they might want to play with the number of perhaps the flag poles and blades. I'm a fan of the dragons. I think that's, you know, landmarks shouldn't be in the business of killing playfulness. And I think they actually, those are actually, they effectively work as, they might as well say, "Harry Potter" on them. And that sort of illuminates the need for some of the flag pole landmarks.
Okay, yeah. And I agree, I think that the signs in the storefronts are really modest in size, actually. But we have a position about flag poles that we apply throughout the district and other districts. And I think that the Times Square community may be supposed to say about the vitrine.
Yes, my turn.
Diane?
Yeah, I actually support the dragons as well. And I think that the vitrines, I think it would be okay to have them, but they're too many. On the side, it's got five, the other way, it's got three, and maybe one on the other side. One on the other side, and three on the other side. Just the same. By the way, I think a little vitrine goes a long way. You know, it's very emphatic statement, so I think we can deal with this twice. And I'm a little bit inclined to say, you know, not to put in flag poles, although there are flag poles in this district, because I feel that there's a lot of other signage going on, so it's not good. It's again, too much, and then it's going to, actually, it's going to obscure the dragons somewhat. Dragons would be confidence. So, I'm a little bit, I'm thinking maybe we just, not have flag poles. But that's, I guess, another.
Yeah, I think there is still a little too much overall signage. And I think if you look in page 10, all of it's concentrated on the corners. So, perhaps that for the blade sign is not necessary. And maybe the flag pole at that location is not necessary. But the flag pole further down the street might be okay. I'm okay with the dragons. And I agree with the vitrines. I think that they, they kind of, somehow sort of stop the perceptions of it. I know that sort of the intent was to do that, to not make it look like one space, but I think it's working against it. I think it's too much separation of the vitrines.
First of all, this is a very handsome building. And it's an arresting building in its location. So, when I lived in that neighborhood, I was, that sort of building. Partly it's its relatively low size, partly it's its color. I think that would be very particularly, partly I think it's Restoration Hardware that the neighborhood could design to the bottom of the building to make it more useful. So, it would be important, even if the building weren't so handsome, to get this right. But nonetheless, I think it's even more important to be sure that this Palazzo style commercial building, reading in tree size is, with that reading is maintained. I think it does in the scheme with a couple of notes. Of course, I like the dragons as well, but they have to be reversible without any issues with the regular clocks, I think. The signage, I think I can go along with the signage. I prefer, if I understood, as Sarah would say, that there's one flag pole on each of the avenues, I feel I think that can. And I would, I guess this is a semi-question. I don't find that... And I would, I guess this is a semi question, I don't find that, I don't, I don't, this doesn't fill up the 42nd Street Times Square, I don't understand that comment actually, but, but if I understand it right, and if we somehow cannot allow what we see here, the applicant could remove the two returns, if I understand it, and plan, or their doors, if you could get a plan up there, just remove those two doors on each end, and voila, he can do what he wants because it's further.
And it's really freestanding, voila, you can see the sides and the top as well.
All right. Well, I'm not sure where we're going at it in any event, but I just wanted to clarify from my own stuff and maybe for others, what would be allowable without, without our approval for the rules? Anyway, I think it's an interesting proposal on board for those few comments.
I think of the, and I often do, that flags are good, and so don't have really an issue with two flags, although I would support and agree with other commissioners if the feeling was to have just one, that's fine too. The blade signs, I think probably definitely. I, I don't see the, the storefront spaces as being like 42nd Street. I mean, I actually think of them, I mean, they're definitely this corporate aspect to them, that's the kind of the 42nd Street, but otherwise, it could be, and I'm kind of curious to know how they will be like for Dirk Goodman or Saxon Avenue, which are, you know, spaces which are interesting always and animated and changing. I, I don't know if that's the case here or if it will be compelling, but I'm kind of interested in that, this building is so exquisite. I, I don't find that they use it under by its, its presence on the street and the other.
It is a good point that department stores do have these vitrines. Corey, can you remind us, is the, what's behind it illuminated or, I mean, LED or active or kinetic in any way, or is it just a static image?
Well, it's a good question, and I think that hasn't been disclosed or decided by the applicant yet, but that, that is part of the reviewing this is the idea that perhaps someone could tell the video wall that runs continuously for five days, top to bottom, side to side, and maybe regular touch.
I agree with the blade signs are redundant. I agree with one flagpole on each facade, and, and I do kind of agree with John, depending on what happens with these vitrines, it could end up being very 42nd Street. If there's a flashing video thing going on, it could be extremely bilaterious, I think, to the, to the perception of this building. And so I would, I would, one, I don't know how we work with staff to limit what goes on there, but I also think that they only need three windows on each facade to be good enough.
Yeah, I agree with John. I'm worried about some things on, I agree with both of you, the flags are okay, the dragons are okay. But in terms of, if you look inside these windows beyond the vitrines, I mean, there's a huge built-in barnings in there that is quite dramatic. And that in and of itself is a window showcase. So I'm just to, you know, again, I feel like we don't need too much. It's almost too busy, and I don't think, I actually thought about the Times Square comments, and you said it, so I, I would think we should limit it. And I think that's basically what's there.
The, the dreams can, if that in the past, we have been able to, we've been asked to approve when it, it was going to be something animated in effect or as opposed to a video as opposed to a, just a painterly appearance and that. So can we limit our vertical and amount direction at this time? And could return to us if they want to.
Is it more set, fill it back, fill it back from the, the facade? That might be argued regularly, what might be going on on that wall of vitrine, as opposed to saying the vitrine is too large and there's a lot of transparency.
This is more of an enforcement question, so I think we could say limited to static image, but enforcing changes that may happen faster when we can get up there is what your opinion is problematic, so from an enforcement point of view, it might be better than if they're number, but it doesn't mean that we can't make that as a condition of the approval.
But again, if they were to, following my earlier comment, to eliminate doors and connections to the wall, maybe they bring it a little bit, down a little bit, and say, do you really want it? And at that point.
Is it to be a contact?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm not really the applicant to do this, but suggesting, but I don't, I don't think the way that our rules work and how that we would have any control.
Yeah, the, the enforcement thing worries me a little bit because I continually go past the manufacturers' handle of that, the issue with that safe, which I think the, the owner has just decided, well, the cost of doing business is pending violation, and so that safe continues to be obscured from the sidewalk, and, and I'm a little worried about just continually allowing enforcement to be the, the, the.
Okay, so I think, it may be, yes, I've heard of.
I agree with Dawn. But my question is the, the color. The original color was gray. Am I missing something or now it's black?
The previously approved color was gray. It was when restoration hardware went in, they proposed it gray, and the commission approved it, and don't believe it was based on analysis. So there's flexibility in terms of color palette. So I think, there's a couple of options. One, we could leave it open, and we could come back and think about a reduced scheme, but I think there is some consistency in the comments that we maybe could take a motion that could be resolved with staff, working with the staff, and I think that would involve one flagpole on each side and reducing the vitrines, working with the staff in some way. And then a couple people mentioned that the blade signs is being excessive. If the flagpoles go down to one on each facade, do you have six people who would also support the blade signs? I think I would, because I think generally, if below the storefront level, everything's fairly small, you would, anyone, everyone else, no? No? Okay, so I don't think we have six for the blade signs. So we can make a, a motion today to reduce the flagpoles to one on each facade, to make them very size, and reduce the size of the vitrines. Working with staff to, to, to appropriate.
In a matter of LPC 20005755, 934 Broadway, ladies in the historic district. An Italian-style store building designed by Dr. Thomas and built in 1962, the application is to modify storefronts and install signage, flagpoles, and clocks. And if the building's style, materials, and details are among the needs that contribute to special architectural historic character of the ladies in my historic district, and our limited role in modifications, finding that the words will not damage or destroy this vintage architectural future building, that the presence of life and signage is consistent with the amount and types of signage that historically existed on the building, specifically at the corners and at the dragons adoring the burgess clocks, will recall the novel con signage of the 19th century, that the modern clocks will be retained and refurbished, while maintaining the same dimensions and method of attachment, and will be subtly illuminated with cold blood around the perimeter of the clock bases, which will allow the clocks to be read at night. The proposed pin mounted, sorry, mounted signage, consisting of hail with opaque brass letters, will be subtly illuminated while proportioned to the corners in relation to the size of the storefront and building, and will not detract from the commercial life of that streetscape. If it was, yeah? That the creation of storefronts displayed vitrines within the display windows on East 22nd Street and Fifth Avenue is consistent with the commercial nature of the ground floor, and will step back from the glazing, therefore, will eliminate transparency from the display windows. If it were a sturdy window on Broadway consisting of two facing windows above a glazed panel with a translucent panel of detail, will maintain the sense of transparency of the storefront and design potential, whereas the framing will be consistently approved of storefront. If the large scale of this commercial building can support the presence of flagpoles, if the size of flagpoles is well proportioned to the facade, consistently with commercial character of the streetscrees, the attachments will not cause severe or minimal damage to the facade. However, I find the cumulative amount of proposed signage and complete facade and cumulative pin mounted signage, blade signs, flagpole, and large dragon sculptures will overwhelm facades, and that the display vitrines comprising the number of full type partitions will hinder transparency from the display window, windows, and be, and will be excessive. Therefore, I recommend that the proposed blade signs and one of the two flagpoles at the Broadway and Kent Valley facades be eliminated, and that the display vitrines be reduced in terms of size and number, and that we worked on with staff.
All of paper?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, so it's approved with those modifications. Continue the work of the vision. So thank you. I think having, Corey mentioned having a short agenda, I don't know if this is going to have a lot of robust discussions today, but I think it was a good thing. Thank you all for your thoughtful comments.